Welcome to a regular board meeting of the Board of Education, November 12th, 2019. It is great to see so many of you here, especially on a school day closing. So, thank you for being here. My name is Anupam Chaksedu and I would like to have my board colleagues introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Lozartz. Thank you for coming out today.
Patty McQuine, nice to see so many people here today.
Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out tonight.
Hi, I'm Kate Borninski. Nice to see everyone and glad to see so many kids in the audience.
And Superintendent Merritt, would you like to walk us through your team?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Nicole Lauer, and thank her for taking the minutes this evening. Also, I'd like to introduce the man behind the scenes, Mr. Charlie Jones, who videotapes our meetings for those that cannot be here in person. I'd like for the remainder of the team to introduce themselves with, to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Mick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, and it's good to see everybody tonight.
Hi, I'm Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Human Resources.
Good evening. Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening. Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. It's nice to see everyone here tonight.
Good evening. Heather Fitchpatrick, President, Education Association.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise and Jayden is going to lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Jayden, please come up. Right up here, please. Right here. Right in the center. Yep, there you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jayden.
Thanks, buddy.
All right, we are moving on to Item A, Adoption of the Agenda, Approval of the Consent Agenda. I'm looking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda. Action Item 20-11-20.
I will start the map.
Thank you. Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member McQuine. And Ms. Merritt, would you like to walk us through?
Yes. This evening, the consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since the last time we were together. Believe it or not, it is November and we are still hiring champions. So, we have new hires for your consideration for some, I'm going to say, some specialized, difficult positions that we've had to fill this school year. Retirements and resignations for your considerations, tenure recommendations. We also have approval of minutes from our special workshop on October the 19th, 2019, as well as regular minute meeting, uh, meeting minutes from October 22nd. And we have a field trip, one out-of-country field trip for your consideration this evening, as well as the first reading of Policies 2265, that's Child Care Center Staff and Volunteers, as well as Policy 8462, Student Abuse and Neglect.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say aye. Okay, motion carries five zero.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce you to some new educators here in our district. We are very fortunate that they have selected Plymouth Canton Community Schools to work as teachers. First, we have Simone Argue, who will be a categorical room teacher at Pioneer Middle School, serving students with emotional impairments. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University and 12 years of experience. Lauren, welcome. Lauren will be an English Language Learners Teacher at Salem High School, and she comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Spring Arbor College. Kappa Jenke. Kappa Jenke is a new social worker here in the district. She will be working at Plymouth High School. She comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Michigan State University, as well as a master's degree from Wayne State University and two years of experience. Amber Cam. Amber will be working in, at the GOLs program, and she is coming to us with a bachelor's degree from Arizona State University, as well as five years of experience. So, welcome, congratulations. We are so excited you've joined our team and we know you will take great care of all of our students here in our district. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome. I thought you were a high school student. Welcome to the district. I just came up the elevator. Thank you. There you go.
Brought snow for you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. So, at this time, I would like to recognize Harriet Merritt. She is retiring at the end of the mo, at the end of December, and she has served as a math teacher here in our district for over nine years. Very exciting news, we have two teachers that are receiving tenure here this evening. That means that they have had five successful years of teaching in our district. So, at this time, if Shannon Martin and Caitlin Cummings could come up, they brought their beautiful children too. You're welcome to come, kids. It's a family celebration, so. So, Shannon Martin. Shannon's the one right there, two children. She's a Spanish teacher here at Salem High School, and she has completed over five years here in our district, successful years. And here's what Kim Vela Rosa, Rosa has to say about Shannon. Shannon Martin is a very special Spanish teacher at Salem High School. Shannon brings a great dynamic to the World Language Department because she is so well-versed in technology. Shannon uses technology to engage her students and shares her plans with other teachers. Shannon always stays up-to-date with new instructional strategies. She also builds great rapport with her students. Congratulations on receiving tenure, Shannon. Next, I would like to introduce you to Caitlin Cummings. She is from Tonda Elementary School, and she is a resource room teacher there. And here is what Dave Turrell has indicated regarding Caitlin Cummings. Mrs. Cummings is first and foremost an advocate for her students. She provides a safe and structured environment that provides students an opportunity to do their personal best every single day. Her lessons are created to the individual needs of each student academically, as well as socially and emotionally. This results in students who not only enjoy her class and the school experience as a whole, but also grow in a myriad of ways. We are very appreciative of her contributions to our Tonda community. So, congratulations, Caitlin, and we are very happy for both of you on receiving tenure here this evening.
Congratulations. 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 How are you?
Congratulations to your mom.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Oh, it's fine. There we go. Congratulations. 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 How are you?
Congratulations to your mom.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. There we go. Congratulations. 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 Thank you.
Congratulations to all the new hires and the staff that just received tenure. Next up is celebrating success, one of the great honors of the evening, so Member McQuine has that honor tonight.
All right, so, tonight, we are going to be honoring Kristin Hennessy. Could come on up. So, celebrating success this evening will honor Kristin Hennessy, Director of Nutrition Services for PCCS. Kristin has been selected as the recipient of the School Nutrition Association of Michigan's 2019 Director of the Year Award. Scott Little, Executive Director of the School Nutrition Association of Michigan, shared that Kristin has demonstrated her leadership in many ways over the years, both at the state and national level, always with a focus on improving children's access to nutritional food. She is always focused on her program at Plymouth Canton, always putting the children's nutritional needs first. Kristin serves as part of the Finance and Operations Department in our district, and at this time, we would like to welcome Debbie Piaz, PCCS Chief Finance and Operations Officer, to say a few words about Kristin and this esteemed honor.
Thank you very much. Kristin has a belief, and a strong belief, that a student who is nutritionally satisfied is one that's ready to learn. Kristin conducts a full-day workshop to make sure that her staff are properly trained in all food preparation and handling procedures, have an understanding of the USDA guidelines, and develop ways to entice kids to eat a full and balanced meal. Kristin was also instrumental in leading the enhancement of all our elementary cafeterias during 2018 and 19. This is the pictures from the award ceremony that was held in Traverse City earlier this year, and this year's theme, she always has a theme for the year, and this year's theme was School Lunch Hero, and to us, she's our school lunch hero.
So, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Kristin Hennessy with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mileage Award. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm never shy, so. Thank you very much. I'm very humbled and honored by this, as I told the audience in Traverse City, but this, to me, is not a Director of the Year Award. This is a district award. I have amazing people who stand by me and support me. As Superintendent Merritt always says, we have a village, and my village is very robust. I have a couple of folks here tonight. The snow kept some away, but I know this is going to be recorded, so this goes out to all of them. My staff are the superhero, superheroes of my village, and they do everything they can to make our program grow and raise the bar for our students. I want to take a minute and also say that 10 years ago, this district took a chance on me, and they brought me into a role, and they have supported me ever since. Superintendent Merritt was actually one of my bosses, and I'm very honored to have worked under her and continue to work under her. She's a strong mentor for me, and she continues to mentor me as she brings folks like Debbie Piaz to work with me. And we will continue to grow our program, and we will continue to make it great in our village. One last moment, I have to tell you, I love my husband, who sits out there. He deals with all my craziness in terms of my passion, especially when I'm advocating for our kids in Washington, DC, and he just looks at me and says, "Go for it, honey. You know what needs to be done." Plus, he's a really good caterer, and when I'm really down on people, he knows how to skirt a table and how to tear down a catering. So, how can I go wrong, right? So, thank you very much for this honor.
So, congratulations, and would you like to go shake the board's hands?
Congratulations.
Again, congratulations, and thanks for all that you do for our kids. Next up is Board Committee Report, starting with the President's Report, and it's been a busy couple of weeks, so let me walk you through some of the great work that's happening within our district that I had an opportunity to be a part of. On October 29th, I was able to attend the implicit bias training that the district has started, and I applaud the district and Dr. Denise Lilly for her leadership in this work, and it was great to see the district finally starting to have these really encouraging, thoughtful, deep, and sometimes difficult conversations. So, thank you for allowing me to be a part of that, and know that this is a lifelong kind of opportunity. It's not something that's just one and done. This is work that has to happen on a regular, daily, intentional basis, on behalf of our kids, to ensure that all kids are getting what they need. So, thank you for the leadership and putting that together. And going on, you know, Superintendent Merritt's wording of takes a village, this is truly work that needs to expand to every part of our village, including community members, so I hope that we just continue to grow this work with the implicit bias training. Next, I had the opportunity to be part of the 88.1 The Park Pledge Drive, and I got to sit with Owen and Musa. If you recall, Owen was the recipient of the award at the last board meeting. I mean, what amazing kids, and they just had me sit down in the studio, made me feel so comfortable, and we just hung out there for two hours trying to do a fun drive for the 88.1 The Park. So, I had a great time, and I want to thank you, thank John, who's Bill's assistant, for making sure that everything just went really smoothly that evening. And I don't know if any other board members had an opportunity to do that, but it's, it was great. 11:07, oh my gosh, that was such a busy day last week. So, we had meetings here, but we also had the Showcase of Grants, which Gretchen is going to talk about in a little bit. Piece Up Open House, right there, and I appreciate Member Borninski, Member Keough, and myself that were able to attend that day, as well as the Piece Up Annual Feast. That was an amazing, amazing event, and I want to make sure I thank every teacher that coordinated this. Ms. Benegas, Atkins, Smith, Evans, Barquette, Hord, and Mullins. And it was an amazing opportunity for the community to come together, have a meal that was put together by the kids. They did everything, from the artwork on the wall, to the linens, to decorating tables with all the flowers that they could find from outside. So, I want to just, just applaud everyone that was a part of that, and Member Borninski was able to join me on that. So, it was a great evening. Did you want to share anything from that day?
Just, I sat with some interesting students, got to know a couple who were seniors and had created the artwork, so that was fun. And then, we had a new student there who was new, not only to the district and to Michigan, but to school, so he had been homeschooled before, so that, I know Ms. Merritt talked to him a little longer than I did, but he was, he was a fun kid to talk to.
Absolutely. And so, when you think about leaving a legacy, I mean, everybody in that room was leaving an amazing legacy for all those kids involved in welcoming that new kid. So, thank you for the great work. On last Friday and Saturday, we had the MASB Annual Leadership, and I want to thank Member Brooks for going to the Delegate Assembly with me. This was his first Delegate Assembly, and it was packed, so do you want to share any feedback from that?
Oh, it was a great learning experience. After introductions, you know, the, they had the person that gave out talks on what was happening in the state with policy and that, in legislative, and that was very interesting to know that firsthand. And it was just a great experience, being able to vote for the changes that we, that filtered down to us. So, I had a great time. It was a long drive.
Yeah, it was worth it.
It was a long, scary drive, but it, it worked out.
So, thank you for joining me on that. MASB is the Michigan Association of School Boards, for those of you that don't know, and as board members, that is our professional learning, and we try to make sure that we do that as often as possible, just like we encourage teachers to go through ongoing professional learning. The board is very engaged and involved in that process, so I want to applaud the MASB leadership for all the great work that they're doing and the changes that they've made on behalf of school boards across the state, really being inclusive, including students, community members, in a lot of their language, but also expanding their civil rights definition to include the LGBTQ community. So, great things happening. I was also able to attend the Saturday workshop where they had a keynote speaker that talked for two hours about social-emotional learning, and we know we've talked about that at this table, and the district continues to do great work, and we know there's a need for more of that work at the district level. And this is not unique to PCCS. Every school district is working through social-emotional learning challenges with their kids at all levels, and we are trying to do what's best for kids and making sure that we have support systems in place, not just within the school system, but within our communities, to make sure that students are set up for success. So, a lot of great work happening, and I'll be sharing some of that information with my board colleagues. I have packets of PowerPoints that were shared during that. They also had a bipartisan panel of some of the state legislators talking about school funding, and so, quite interesting, we know that we are not funded at the adequate level that we need to be at, and everyone's aware of that. So, what's being done since Proposal A? That's where the conversation gets stuck. So, one of the things that was agreed upon was, we know that things need to change. How and where is where people get stuck in the details, but we know that we need to continue to do that work locally and at the state level to make sure that we are getting adequate funding for the kids in our district. So, that is for the MASB Delegate Assembly and the Annual Leadership Conference update. And lastly, but not least, I had the opportunity to watch the Hulsing and Bird Elementary Kids during the Veterans Day Musical Assembly yesterday. I want to applaud Lorene Rochelo, and I apologize if I mispronounce that last name, but she did an amazing job getting all these kids together, getting the veterans, getting the community members to a packed house, and these kids did an amazing job. They were having a great time. They were beat bop and they were singing, and I just want to applaud the kids, the community members, and Lorene and her team for putting on this great event. And it was packed, even though the roads were pretty rough out there, so thank you for that opportunity. That is it for me, for the President's Update. Next is Student Performance and Achievement, the SPAC Committee work. We had a packed agenda last week. We discussed the out-of-country field trip, which was just voted on. We fleshed out the details for the science pathways, changes that will be voted on in a little bit. We reviewed the state assessment results, which we are going to go through in a little bit, so I hope you all stay for that. And we also went through the third-grade reading legislation, which is actually taking place this year with our third graders. So, I am, it was encouraging to hear that the district is doing great work, is being very intentional about communicating with parents about the impact of this legislation and to make sure that our kids are not left behind. So, kudos to Superintendent Merritt and her team to continue doing that good work, and I know Beth is going around to all the parent groups and making sure that parents have the, the right language and understand what's happening with that third-grade reading legislation. Beth, is there anything you wanted to add from that?
Nope, I think that's, pretty much covered it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Our next meeting is Wednesday, December 4th, and I encourage all of you to attend. Thank you. Next up is Policy Committee, Member McQuine.
So, we have not met since the last board meeting, because we usually meet the second board meeting, so we will be meeting November 26th at 5:30 down in the conference room. It is the week before Thanksgiving, but don't let that keep you away. We're discussing the role of SROs in school and the advertising policy, and there may be a song, so come on out.
Thank you, Member McQuine. Next up is Finance and Operations, and we know that Member Keough is out of town today, so who's going to give an update? Member Brooks?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we covered some really good topics that are going to be covered later on with, under the Finance Operations with Ms. Piaz. So, we, we met last Thursday and, and ironed out some of the things, and then our next meeting's going to be Thursday, November 21st.
Thank you. Next up is the Educational Excellence Foundation Report, and we have Gretchen here. Thank you.
Hi. Well, my name is Gretchen Ward. I'm the Executive Director of the Educational Excellence Foundation, and I'd like to thank everyone who came out to our Showcase of Grants. We had a tremendous response from not only the presenters, but our guests and community members who liked to see the partnership between those two events, so we thought that was really great. We appreciate the district's partnership in that, and we look forward to continuing this as a new tradition for us. Today, I'm here to talk about and giving our update. It's going to be a little bit different. We're usually here talking about our classroom grants and talking about the different events or fundraisers we have coming up. Well, today, we'd like to talk a little bit about something that's very important to the foundation, but that not everyone in our community is aware of that we do, and that's our Level the Learning Field. The EEF believes that all students should come to school prepared to learn and ready to learn with equal access to opportunities, and the way that we're able to live that belief is through our donor-advised funds. We hold a variety of funds at the foundation that are earmarked for specific purposes that really advance that leveling the learning field mission. So, today, I'm just going to share with you a few of those. I understand we have a packed agenda, so I'm going to be very brief, and it's going to be a high-level overview. So, one, I apologize if I go quickly, and number two, if you'd like to learn more about any of these, please follow up with me after the meeting tonight. I'm happy to have a cup of coffee or discuss anything that we go over tonight. The first fund I'd like to mention is the fund that we have for the Clothing Bank. You may or may not know that at Salem High School, there is a Clothing Bank for families in need of that resource, and students and families can be referred there for articles that they need. We have a monetary fund where we accept donations, because the Clothing Bank needs to go out and purchase things, such as socks or undergarments for these families. So, we collect donations year-round, so that when these needs arise, they can go out and shop, and we can reimburse them for those expenses. It's a wonderful way to support a great jewel here in the district. The next fund that we will hold is the Weekend Backpack Program, or what we call No Child Hungry. The district partners with Gleaners Food Bank and provides backpacks for students over the weekend filled with food who may not, or families who may not otherwise have those resources. So, students will go home with a, with a backpack full of food on a Friday, bring it back on a Monday to be replenished the following week. Unfortunately, Gleaners has had to reduce the amount of funding over the years, and so the EEF opened up a fund to help fill that gap. So, when backpacks need to be replaced, or potentially towards the end of the year, if they need to supplement some of the food, we have a fund that's ready and available to help supplement those costs. The next fund I'd like to share is what we call our PCCS School Lunch Fund. This was a fund that was brought in by a concerned group of parents a handful of years ago that said, "What happens when a family falls on a financial hardship, whether someone loses their job or gets laid off, but they don't yet qualify for free or reduced lunch?" Well, the answer was, that student goes into a negative lunch balance, and they carry that with them. So, these parents opened up the lunch fund, so that when students are found in that position, a negative balance on their lunch isn't another thing they have to carry. So, we work with schools, whether it be the administrator, or the lunch fund, or the cafeteria worker, to identify those students, and we'll work with the Food and Nutrition Services to help relieve that burden right there. The next area of support are the athletic hardships. We know we are a pay-to-play district, so at the middle school and high school level, students have to pay to participate in athletics, and unfortunately, that can be a barrier to a lot of students. So, for each of the high schools and at the middle school level, we have fund, we've opened up a fund and accept donations, so that when students need a scholarship or help to support paying those fees, the athletic director will work with that family and then let us know what that need is, so we can help fill that gap. We're really proud to be able to support any student who wants to participate and has the ability to play sports. And the last funds, the last group of funds I wanted to mention tonight kind of fall into the other needs category, and particularly for our middle school students, and those are what we call our Middle School Intervention Funds. We've opened up a fund for each of the middle schools and accept donations, so that when a student has a hardship and perhaps can't pay their Chromebook deposit or their Chromebook repair, or they want to go on a field trip, or their class camp experience, but they can't do that because of a financial barrier, we have funds available for those students, whether it be a partial scholarship or a full scholarship. We work with the principal of that school to, they'll identify the need and we'll help fill that gap. We're really proud to be able to do all of these different funds, again, so each student has the exact same opportunity, no matter where they are or what their finance, family's financial situation is. I do want to mention that all of these funds are donor-driven, and so we do accept donations, and we rely on the donations from our support of our community members, local businesses and companies. So, if anyone is interested in learning more about these funds, please reach out, let me know. Again, I'm happy to sit down and have a conversation, and donations can be accepted online at our website, which is eefforkids.org. So, thank you. That is our November kind of snapshot tonight, and we look forward to coming back in December and giving our December update.
Thank you so much. I really want to say I appreciate your leadership. I mean, this is so encouraging to see that you are looking at all the different needs throughout the district, so I encourage everybody that's watching, all of us here at the table, to continue donating to the EEF Foundation, so thank you for all your leadership with that work.
We appreciate the support.
Thank you. All right, we have citizens' comments, so we have quite a bit, and I'm excited to hear some of the kids talk. I just want to remind everyone, you get three minutes, and this is an opportunity for citizens to share their thoughts for three minutes without being interrupted, and the board does not engage in a dialogue. We simply listen and respect that time. So, we will start with Kim Crouch, our former board member and former president here.
Well, my name is Kim Crouch, and my address is 46343 Doubletree Road in Canton, Michigan. It's so interesting to be on this side of the fence. When I, it's been almost a year since I left school board, and I left with kids on my mind, and now I'm back with kids on my mind. And so, today, I'm here as a representative of Jack and Jill of America, the Ypsilanti Chapter, and what Jack and Jill is, is an organization that creates leadership and foster civic and philosophic engagement for future generations of leaders, and so today, you're going to hear from some of those future leaders. This month is Legislative Advocacy Month, and they unanimously- This month is Legislative Advocacy Month, and they unanimously wanted to come talk to the school board. I didn't, I didn't prod or push. They wanted to come talk to the school board about some of the issues that they were concerned about. So, they're going to do that. We did not review their writing, we didn't revise it, so you're going to hear from them in their own voice. And so, I'm going to just stay up here a little bit in case anyone needs help. And I just want to say, I am still glad to hear that policy rules today and is more fun than finance still. So, with that said, thank you very much. Nice to see you guys.
Thank you. Next up is Jayden.
My name is Jayden Crouch, and I live at 46343 Doubletree Road in Canton, Michigan. I'm a student at, in fifth grade at Tonnell Elementary. Thanks for closing school today. You made my day fun. I'm here today to talk to you about three things to make schools better. Let's start with math. I feel like math is too easy, and we should take it up a notch with some more books. Also, during the second half of the year until summer, we should do a grade above where we are in math. What I mean by that, what I mean by that is that we are moving to the next grade, except if you're in fifth, eighth, or 12th grade, because you will graduate anyway. We should go up a level in math so we're prepared for the next grade. We should also look at getting the poor math in our schools. I googled and saw it was the best math. Another thing was, another thing we should add is more male teachers. I feel like we don't have enough male teachers. Men make up only about 11% of teachers in this school year. In 2015 to 2016, 23% of the teachers were men. That was more than this year. That makes no sense that the percentage dropped from the last two or three years until now. Maybe there should be more registration for male teachers out there. I look at my principal, though, he is a male. Third thing is, we also need more diverse teachers. I like my teachers, but it would be nice to see more black teachers. So, those are my three reasons to improve our school. I hope you agree with me.
Thank you. Next up is Austin McMullin.
It's pretty obvious that I'm not Austin McMullin. I'm his mom, Shanta McMullin. He couldn't be here tonight, but he did give, he dictated some questions and comments for me to provide. And our address is 5908 Meadowview Drive in Canton. Austin is a third grader at Dotson Elementary. He had three comments slash questions. His first is that, "My cousin goes to school in Muskegon, Michigan, and she has had Spanish in her class since she was in kindergarten. I would really like to know if we could have a chance to learn another language in elementary school, too. I think this would help us be competitive as we get older." Second is, "Is there a way for younger kids to give our opinion to you about what we want to have at school, or do we just have to come to this meeting? I would, it would be cool if there was a group like Student Council of Kids that can always share how we feel and our ideas." And finally, "I would like to have more opportunities for advanced learning for people who might not be able to go to tag, but still are more advanced than their other classmates."
Thank you. Thank you. I'm just jotting down some notes. Okay. Next up is Dwight Lovins.
Hi, my name is Dwight Lovins, and I live at 4013 Marion Drive. And my, and please consider, please consider having kids, students, have a say in the 10-year plan.
Thank you. Next up is Sydney Alvin.
Hi, I'm Sydney, and I live in Plymouth, Michigan, at 50611 West Fellows Creek Court, and I'm in sixth grade. And why do we have, why don't we have an endless amount of snow days?
Thank you. Next up is Madison Duren. Did I say that right? Thank you.
My name is Madison Duren. I live at 50302 Maywood Drive. I live in Canton, and I go to Pioneer Middle School. And my question is, why can't we wear hoods or hats during school?
Thank you, Madison. Next up is Sean Wilson.
My name is Sean Wilson. My question is, why is there more hands-on science? Like, for my example, why is there, for science, like, why can't we use test tubes or anything like that?
Okay, thank you. Loving this. Next up is Holland Wilson.
Hi, my name is Holland Wilson, and I, and I live at 51265 Goldridge Lane. My, my cousin, and I think that we need therapists in school, because kids might be scared or nervous. And, and I think that they need to calm down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Taylor Bond.
My name is Taylor Bond, and I, my address is 3039 Hippocord Drive, and I go to Achee Charter Academy. I'm in sixth grade. My question is, what could we do to reduce gun violence? And my opinion is to help reduce gun violence. I think we should have stricter gun laws and screenings for people who own guns.
Thank you. Next up is Jocelyn Desson.
Hello, I'm Jocelyn Desson. I'm a junior at Salem High School. Last June, I believe, I came in here to talk about the pool and how it was broken at Salem High School, and I wanted to say thank you for the equipment that we received, but I would also like to report back on the equipment that we got. We got new blocks, which were really exciting and new, and everybody was very excited to use them. But they actually, most of them broke within the first time we used them. We were able to get a couple of them fixed and put back together, but then they continued to consistently break throughout the rest of the year, and it got to the point where I think after our second meet, we were no longer allowed to move the backstop, which you use to propel yourself off the blocks. Also, our timing system, we were told all that, all the wires and stuff were supposed to be put in the ground, and it was supposed to help with our malfunctions. We actually saw an increased amount of malfunctions with having to delay meets over 30 minutes and even putting diving beforehand, because we were having so many issues, we weren't able to actually start the meet. And then we would get maybe 15 or 20 minutes in, and then the whole system would just explode, and it wouldn't work. So, I wanted to just tell you guys again what our issues were, and I hope you have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens' comments? Could you fill out a form, please? Oh, I'm sorry, on the same form. Sorry about that. Krista Desson?
Good evening. Okay. So, Jocelyn and I both came to talk with you in June to give some ideas about swimming. I went through the proposal for the 10-year plan and some of the facility upgrades. There weren't very many details in there on what the proposed pool is. So, I kind of wanted to give kind of my perspective and what I see in the swimming community around us that we could, as a school district, really capitalize on. So, as a district looks into the next 10 years, I hope there's consideration as to how our facilities and upgrades may be able to actually generate revenue and help defray building and district costs. Many other school districts are building pool facilities that have public access, memberships, swim lessons, and fitness classes. I'd highly recommend viewing the following facilities: Celine High School, Brighton High School, Novi High School, Belleville High School, Waterford Mott High School, Waterford Kettering High School, and Lake Orion High School. These are great places, great pools, great spectator areas that have large swim meets there all the time and can generate revenue for the district. This area is in dire need of additional pool facilities that can generate revenue. You can compete in swimming from the age of four all the way up to the master's level, which is anyone older than the age of 18, and there are people competing well into their senior years, which is especially important as our population is aging, and for the first time ever, we have more citizens in this country over the age of 65 than under the age of five. Our season starts with regular meets that can go anywhere from four to 20 teams. We then start championship season, which is districts, Junior Olympics, and States, and there is no pool in Michigan right now that can hold sectionals or nationals. Nobody's big enough. Our seas, there are currently 57 short-course swim meets scheduled for the current season, short-course runs. It's a 25-yard race, races that run from September into March. Right now, I'm running a meet December 6th, 7th, and 8th at the Lonia Recreation Center, and I would highly encourage any of you that want to come and see what it's like, to come see me. I'd be happy to give you a tour and show you around. That, that weekend, there are actually two other large swim meets, so that's 60 teams potentially that could be competing in one weekend. Let me see. So, just to give you an idea, our campus park is in a great location. We're right down from M14. There's hotels all along the M14 and 275 corridors, so people can come from all over. We make money on pool rental fees, concession fees, admission fees, 50/50 fees, merchandise sales, and on average, my team can make $12,000 per weekend, and that's after all of our facility and labor fees are paid. So, if you want any more information on that, I'd be happy to talk to anyone in the future to give you some additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. I received one more. This is Mackenzie Wilson.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie Wilson. I live at 51265 Goldridge Lane, Canton, Michigan. I'm a sixth grader at Pioneer Middle School, and I have two questions. My first one is, as a teacher, how can you guarantee that I will receive a fair opportunity of learning as my peers? And my second question is, what is being done to make sure that I can reach my highest potential as my peers without judgment? Thank you.
Thank you. Left me speechless there. Do we have any more citizens' comments? I want to thank everyone that participated tonight. This is encouraging. I mean, this is part of what we do, right? Is to make sure that the voices are heard of the community, and I really appreciate the kids coming forward and sharing some great thinking, some great questions. So, we will take a look at this, and Ms. Merritt will have all of these questions, and we've been taking notes, so I really appreciate everyone's input tonight. Next up is Administrative Reports and Recommendations, starting with Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much. I want to echo your applause of our young students that were here this evening. It is so important when you think about your voice being heard within our community, within your school, advocating for your own education, as well as the education of your peers. So, I'm very positive for you being here, sharing your thoughts. Want to encourage you to continue to share those thoughts at your school level. I think someone asked the question, "Do we have to come to this type of meeting to do it?" You're always welcome to this meeting, but continue to be an advocate as well, as well at your own schools, and we'll work together to continue to make our district great. So, thank you for that. I also want to thank our amazing maintenance and ground staff. As the kids said, "Thank you for the snow day," and I know it's a happy day. It's not always the easiest day for those that are charged with keeping you safe and making sure that our facilities are ready for, to receive you each and every day. So, I do want to say, we, we can never make anyone happy in terms of the decisions that are made around snow days, but we definitely don't take those decisions lightly. That is a thorough process. Mr. Tiskowitz, I believe, started driving this morning at 3 o'clock. We have a team that gets out on the roads to make sure that they're safe. Our maintenance and ground staff, they're out salting and plowing, beginning, I think, around 3:30, shortly thereafter. Our bus drivers, I know that yesterday was a very, very, very challenging day in terms of how the snow was coming down, the amount of snow, but also how heavy it was. And as much as people think, "We're not plowing, we're plowing," but at times just can't keep up. And so, we just want to thank our bus drivers for getting our students to school safely, getting home safely. Our secretaries, I know that they received a numerous amount of phone calls with parents that are stressed at times about the weather and wanting to know what we're going to do. So, just appreciate the entire team for coming together, but wanted to emphasize again, after driving, we have phone calls with meteorologists. We consult with superintendents and districts from Wayne County, Oakland County. So, there's a lot of, that goes into the process, but school or student safety is always our number-one priority, and I just want to emphasize that. So, thanking the entire team and thanking our parents for your patience as we make the decisions on the best, in the best interest of students. Also, I wanted to just share, we had a lot of events this week, as you shared already. I wanted to just add one more. Last evening, I had the opportunity to spend some time at Farrin, Farrin Elementary School. It was an opening in honor of Maggie's STEM Lab. This, Maggie was a former Farrin student who passed away two years ago, and to keep her memory alive, her parents opened a fund with the Educational Excellence Foundation. We have some pictures here of last night's event. They really wanted to wait for a project that they felt that they could support. Maggie absolutely loved math, and when the idea for a STEM Lab came along, offering a lasting impact on Farrin students, it was a perfect fit. We are so excited for all of the amazing ways that students can benefit from this creative space. We want to thank our principal, Carolyn Washington, our partners at Bosch, who helped to support this effort, our Maggie's family, and as well as all those that are involved to make this happen. So, just an incredible opportunity. I know that we have, I believe, a STEM Lab at Gallimore, as well as Smith and Bird, and so now we have this at Farrin. And as we talk later on about our 10-year Facility and Utilization Plan, we just have incredible opportunities for innovation across our district as we look through a lens of equity, making sure that every student has what they need. So, just wanted to applaud those efforts.
Next up is Finance and Operations, Debbie Piaz.
I believe Superintendent Merritt's going to kick us off and continue on through the rest of the presentation.
All right. So, continuing with that lens of equity, I'm going to say this is a, almost like, I'm going to use the analogy of pre-K through 12th grade experience of our students. For the last 12 months, not years, we've been working on this 10-year Facility and Utilization Plan, and tonight, we have the beginnings of graduation. We're ready to, to have our solemn, a celebration or ceremony to really just unveil, unveil the work of, that we've been doing for the last year in order to bring forward a recommendation. With this 10-year Facility and Utilization Plan, as I said, we've been talking through community forums, through board workshops, engaging with our communities and our stakeholders to say, "What is it that we need for our students for the next 10 years in Plymouth-Canton Community Schools?" And I want to emphasize, I use the word "need." This is not about what we want, but what our kids need and deserve. And so, we started on this Facilities and Utilization Study, looking through the lens of equity. What we've said from the beginning is, it should not matter what your zip code is. Every student in PCCS should have the right to the same Plymouth-Canton experience. And so, we wanted to make sure that all of our buildings are equipped with furniture, with enough space in terms of capacity for adequate programming, innovative programs, programming, so our students can be competitive. We have some schools, for example, at the elementary level, that have a shared space for cafeterias and gymnasiums. It was important for us to make sure that we had dedicated space for our art and music and PE, as well as our cafeterias and gyms in each of our buildings. So, tonight, we're going to spend some time talking about this work, looking through this lens of equity, as well as fiscal responsibility. lens of equity, as well as fiscal responsibility. The last time we came out for- to ask our community for a bond election was in 2013, and we were able to do some tremendous work for our students through that bond, through that support. We have been very fiscally responsible and good stewards of our taxpayers' money. That's evidenced by our unqualified bond, the fact that we're bond rating, the fact that we're able to go out for bonds without high interest rates, and we're able to invest in our schools. We think about this as real estate and investing in property. We need to make sure that we keep our property safe and warm and dry for our students. So, looking at the fact that we've been fiscally responsible in 2013, we're now six years later looking at additional investments that we need to make into our buildings to make sure that we keep them strong. And the competitive advantage, we think about what's going on right now, we just, I think on the November 7th, is that the date, November 7th election? Fifth election. Seventy-seven percent of school districts across the state were able to have a successful approval of bond asks on the ballot, and I think that that's an important number to see, that around our state, our communities are invested in our schools, and when we talk about what our students need and what they deserve, they deserve that investment as well, so that we can also have the competitive edge. If you think back to, I think, 2016, we started with that message, "Why PCCS." If you remember, we were at a time when we were losing 400 kids almost a year, and we had to remind our community that we are here and we are amazing. Why PCCS, because there's no better opportunity for students, and we, I think we got that message and we stabilized our enrollment. We were going through a process of right-sizing our district at the time, and that was difficult. We had some boundary changes, we had to close schools, and we were trying to achieve capacity for our school buildings, which we did. We had a focus on the last year about our middle schools, we wanted to make sure that we had the, which we really thank our community for, we had the Central Middle School that had been around for 100 years, we were able to close that, and we were able to open the beautiful school in Canton Liberty Middle School, and also add some STEM additions to our other middle schools. So that really, with technology, buses, that was the focus of 2013. Now, looking forward, making sure that we can continue on that equity across our other buildings from kindergarten up through 12th grade. So with that, I'd like to stop talking and turn this process over to Mr. Tiskowitz, who will tell you a little bit about the process that we've gone through over the last month, introduce some of our guests this evening, and share what is in this bond.
Thank you Superintendent Merritt. I am very, very excited to be here and share the culmination of our work over the last year. It's been quite a process that we've tackled, and I think in the end, it will be an amazing thing for our students. Our goal was to take a look at a couple of things. We had to look at what our facility needs is gonna be for the next 10 years, and we were also looking at what our boundaries are gonna look like. That was the two major focuses of our work. But the first part we needed to really focus on was our 10-year master plan. We are, we were in the process of developing a comprehensive 10-year master plan for PCCS, and we really, as Mrs. Merritt said, was, our focus was on what our students need. And what we wanted to make sure was that regardless of what building a student came into, they would have the access to the same programming, they would have access to the same things, and these are the areas that we really focused on, on what our students need. Our students need to know that when they walk into one of our buildings, they will be safe and secure. They can, they should be able to walk into our buildings and know that the heat's gonna work, that the roof's not gonna leak, that they are gonna be in a facility that's airtight, and that is a great place for learning. They need to know, and they need equity of programs within our facilities, whether they're at an elementary, whether they're at a middle school or a high school, that regardless of where they're at, they're gonna have the same programs offered regardless of what building in there, they're in. They also need to be able to have access to the latest technology and the infrastructure that's within our district to run those, that technology. We also wanted to make sure that they had innovative programming, things that we may not have thought of or think of in the next 10 years. For example, one of the things that came up was, in our last bond, the iPad hadn't even been discussed, and we were, we were ahead of that. We did some, a lot of work to make sure that our students had the latest technology in our one-to-one program in our last bond. We also wanted to make sure that the work that we do will provide the ability to grow. We offer some programs, we want to be able to grow that for our students, and to make sure that we have the programming that they're gonna need to be successful citizens. We want to make sure that we have flexibility in our programs, that we have the ability to, you know, to change as time changes, and that technology, for example, is one of those things that we want to make sure that we're flexible enough to be able to do. Also, we want to make sure that our students need, make sure that our students have the furniture that they need for their classrooms. Now you see, when you go into a classroom, the students aren't just sitting in rows, they need the ability to be able to move furniture and do collaborative work, and to be able to have flexible learning areas. And we want to make sure that we're competitive to our surrounding districts. We have some amazing programs that our district offers, and we want to be able to compete with our, with our other educational options. So as I mentioned, the focus of this work was making sure there was equity of offerings and opportunities across the district, and also to take a look at our building assessment work. The process we used, I don't have the clicker, Nick, if you're, thank you. The process we used was driven by our board policy 9140.01. Our policy says that we need to assess the needs to conduct a facility utilization boundary study on a biannual basis. So we, if you recall, we did this work several years ago, and it was time to take a look at whether we needed to do this work. The policy also says we need to investigate ways to optimize the utilization of our facilities while creating the capacity to enhance our programs. That's the number-one purpose of the policy. The second purpose is to develop boundary recommendations for each of our schools that will create stable and equitable attendance area at the elementary and at the high, or middle school level. We, in this process, we engaged with many of our stakeholders, and we had some assistance from some of our partners in learning. Plant Maran Cressa, with assistance of them, we looked at our enrollment projections for the next five years. We enlisted the help of TMP Architecture to look at our visioning work, which was a big part of this assessment work. And then we also worked with McCarthy and Smith to look at our building assessments. They have been working with our district for a number of years and had a, had a plan that they've been updating as we've done the bond work, and continued to look at our needs and what we, our buildings need. And we also enlisted the help of a steering committee. We had many members of our steering committee, from board members to parents to building leaders, to district-level administrators, to help lead this work. The timeline we used, we started back in October of 2018, where McCarthy and Smith began to look at our assessments and review all of our needs. In February, we used the assessments from the consultants to help guide our work. The next step was to engage the community through our visioning sessions. We invited representatives from every school, we invited administration, teachers, parents, and students to take part in these visioning sessions, and we did them at all levels, from middle school, high school, elementary. We looked at programming in terms of athletics and activities, we looked at our early childhood program, our special education department, we're all part of the visioning sessions. Our steering committee continued to work through May of 19, where we facilitated a process on how we are gonna evaluate what our needs were, and again, this was focused on needs and equity amongst our buildings. In October of 2019, we did a board workshop to share the results of the work of the steering committee, and then now we are here tonight to share the culmination of this work and to consider a resolution to move forward with the work. And with that, it will take the dollars, and we'll have to go out, if the board approves, to go out to a bond vote in March of 2020. That is the proposed date for the bond election. Next slide lists all the members of our steering committee, and those that put in countless hours to do this work, and I want to thank them for their work. It was a lot of work that we did, countless meetings in the evenings that we came together and analyzed and scrubbed data and looked at all of the needs of the district. So, with that, I'm gonna next turn it over to Paul Wills from Plant Maran Cressa, who will share our enrollment projections for the next five years.
Thanks, Mr. Tiskowitz, and good morning, everybody. Good evening. Make sure everyone's still awake from this morning's snow day. So, we've actually been working with the district since 2012, when the district really took a hard look and did some of the hard tasks that Superintendent Merritt mentioned about, in terms of looking at enrollment holistically, because it does start with the kids, from an academic perspective, from a financial perspective, and ultimately to a building utilization. As Kurt mentioned, we're one of the four demographers recognized by the Department of Treasury to do enrollment projections for districts. We work with a lot of your peers, from Livonia, Rochester, Utica, Wall Lake, Novi, et cetera. We also looked at the last seven years of historical data, so this is audited by the state, this is your fall counts that you get your foundation allowances for, as well as the spring count. For planning purposes, we're really looking at a method three, and we'll get into some of those explanations of the why. Right now, if you take a look at the total enrollment of K-12 students in the state of Michigan, there's a decrease over the next five to 10 years, a lot of that's attributed to birth rates. So if you take a look at your outgoing senior class of roughly 1,400, your incoming class of 1,100, you can kind of see that. One of the benefits you do have here in Plymouth-Canton is you do have a very strong housing market, so again, that's gonna be offsetting some of those decreases that you'd see just from a natural cohort going forward. So, overall, we're looking at a method three going forward for that projection. We're gonna start with the elementary schools. The way the graph works is the purple line is really your historical data since 2013-14 school year. So you can see, back in that timeframe, you had just over 7,000 students that were in the elementary schools. We know that this was, again, kind of a culmination of taking a couple of buildings offline, so you saw that decrease, but more importantly, 2015-16, you started to see the increase, just over 7,000 students. So we looked at this last fall count, about just over 7,000 students at the elementary level. From a perspective standpoint, in 2010, you had roughly 8,400 students, so again, addressing that decline was the right thing to do back at the time, but now we're in this mode of strong housing academies, picking up some additional schools because you're programming going forward. So, the graph, starting really from 2019 first count, the blue line represents a method one, which if you look at the legend on the left-hand side, is really a six-year retention rate, looking back the last six years historical. If you take a look at the red, which is a method two, that's really looking at the last two years. Again, from a planning perspective, we'd say we'd recommend method three, and the reason being is, again, Central came offline at the middle school level, you have New Liberty, Allen and Feagle came offline, but you were able to repopulate some of those facilities. So, from a strong standpoint of enrollment, you're just gonna be over 7,100 in the next two to three years, and then potentially tailing off, and again, that's gonna be a direct relation to some of the utilization work we did with the district, and reaching out to the municipalities, looking at the number of housing starts. I know the developers are kind of looking for more land, there's not a whole lot of more land to purchase, so again, from a maximum building standpoint, we're seeing a potential slowdown in that timeframe, which would result in that decline at the elementary level. The middle school level, if you take a look at the chart there in 2013-14, just under 4,200 students. This past fall count was 3910, and again, because of the robust housing market that we see, again, these are not necessarily your starter homes in the Plymouth-Canton area, so it's maybe that secondary home, so people moving into the district. We're seeing a potential increase at the middle school level, if you looked at a method one or a six-year average, potentially up to roughly 43, over 4,300. Method two, which is that two-year, about 4,100, and method three, which we'd recommend, is roughly 4,200. From a planning perspective, back in 2010, you had roughly 4,300, so that's why, when you start looking at some of the proposed capital projects, you're not seeing large additions at the middle school, because again, you have Liberty, and I think McCarthy, Smith, and T. We can get into some of those utilization conversations going forward. The other we do is, we look at the elementary and middle school cohorts moving into the high school, so one you need is about the park, because everyone always ends up at the park, from a site perspective. 6226 back in 2013-14, most recent count was just above 6,000, and again, if you were to take a look at a six-year trail with method one, potentially down to 5183, two-year look would be roughly 5891, and again, a method three, which we'd recommend from a planning perspective, just over 5,500. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to McCarthy Smith.
Good evening. I get to talk about the assessment work. So, going back, in 2012, we did an assessment of the district, and that became kind of like the cornerstone part of the 2013 bond. And within that assessment, there was a priority one and priority two type work, and then we look, again, in about 2015, we were asked to revisit that assessment. So some of that priority two work is becoming of age, it needed to kind of get moved up. 2018, we kind of got the band back together, we walked back through all the buildings, we worked together with the district administration and leadership to kind of reevaluate. What's assessment? These are the things that you really need, these are the building infrastructural things. These are the things that keep you warm, safe, and dry. They make the kid, it makes it a safe environment for the students. So going through all those buildings, we went and kind of recaptured some of those things, reidentified some of those scopes, and costed those out. The other thing that we did, the district employed another consultants to take a look at the roofing as a separate entity, and then also as the parking lots. So as we look at the categorization of the assessment work, it's typically site, parking lots, things of that nature, landscape, building envelopes, roofing, windows, interior finishes, plumbing, the HVAC systems and electrical systems, for itemized costs, so that way we can identify where the reinvestment was gonna happen. We also worked with the district, the district provided this information on the transportation needs for bus purchases in the future. So again, general, what are these needs, or what's the scope of this work? We look at site improvements, pavement replacement, we're looking at conditions of the pavement and replacing it one-for-one, we're also looking at traffic safety improvements. There are some sites we'll be talking about, that there's some opportunity for some improvement with traffic distribution. Landscaping and curb improvement for the buildings, there is a desire to kind of enhance that curb appeal as you enter the site. Playground improvements, stormwater and drainage improvements. And just a little caveat, we've done improvement work over the years, but only as much as can be afforded, so that we're going in a little bit deeper into this review. Building improvements within the buildings themselves is really looking at floor finish upgrades throughout the district, ceilings and building-wide LED lighting replacements. So, if you go into the buildings, replacement of those ceiling systems, and then also enhancing it with LEDs. Interior doors and frames, doesn't sound like much, but doors, they have a life, and some of the doors are becoming of age and need to be replaced, and that coincides with some hardware replacement as well. Exterior doors, frames, and hardware, again, aging out. Building-wide painting, as a result of these improvements, classroom storage upgrades, cabinets within the classrooms, casework upgrades. Building improvements, some corridor lockers where needed, kitchen upgrades. The elementary levels, some of your elementary, definitely, there's an opportunity there. Toilet room upgrades, it's a favorite one. Some of those are the behind-the-doors, you don't get to see, and when you go in, you see why, so they need a chance for upgrades. There's an ADA entrance at Salem High School, there's also some ADA access at the auditorium stages that need to be required, and then as a part of the assessment work, we looked at the auditorium stage lighting replacement. There was a need to replace that lighting, just from an assessment perspective. There is some locker room upgrades, gym bleacher replacements, only at Plymouth High School, and then the wrestling, Matt Hoyt's at a couple of buildings. And then, we've replaced boilers over the years. Going back even in the previous bonds, back in 2002, there were some boiler replacements, and again, in 2013, in 2004, so boilers have a life, and included in this report are those boilers that are in need of replacement. And then last, taking into consideration the roof study that was prepared and incorporating that into it. Years ago, we had Plymouth High School on there as a roof to be replaced, and someone suggested, "Well, that's a new building." It was, but as we go back, it's been about 16, 17 years, it's getting old. You know, it's 17 years, that roof's getting a little bit of age, so as we look at that, you have to put it in that right perspective. So with that, we go into the visioning process, which our, Mr. Weinrock is gonna share. Thank you.
Good evening. We're talking about the visioning and the visioning process. So, the purpose of the visioning was to conduct sessions to talk about- So the purpose of the visioning was to conduct sessions to talk about and identify student needs, and part of the vision, we were also talking about programming opportunities, educational programming opportunities. One of the goals that we were talking about is this 85% building utilization. And when we talk about this 85%, there's a educational programming guideline that basically recommends a building's general education population, classroom size, or classroom population would be at 85% of the building's capacity. What that allows is for the district to house special education programs, house preschool, and other programs that don't fall into the general education guideline. So it allows your building to be sized well enough for the district to grow and expand, and offer other programs and opportunities in the building. As was mentioned, the visioning sessions were conducted, it started in February through May, and it was comprehensive with all grade levels. Talked also about activities and athletics, special ed, preschool. Everybody was given an opportunity to come to the table and talk about the future of Plymouth Canton schools. The visioning was facilitated by TNP Architecture and McCarthy and Smith. The district did have a hand in gathering up the people that were needed to be at these sessions. As mentioned, the stakeholders included students. We had students involved, community members, staff, administration, and board members. The potential programming and the facility needs that were developed are, it's all for the kids. So as we talk about visioning, it is, it's focused on pre-K through the 12th grade. One item that came out, or the biggest, I want to say, theme that came out of the visioning is equity, and it was mentioned that the goal is to look for equity amongst all buildings. Some buildings have programs and opportunities that other buildings don't. So part of the visioning was taking a look to see how we can bring everyone to the equity, bring equity amongst buildings. Part of the equity has to do with secure entry vestibules at all buildings. We were able to do that under the 2013 bond for a number of buildings. Some of the elementary schools and middle schools in the district do not have the ability because their offices were inborn in the middle of the school. So we're looking under visioning to improve that by moving the main office to the front of the building. And the middle, our elementary school equity, part of that that was discussed earlier had to do with cafeterias and gyms. Currently, you have five buildings that have a separate cafeteria, a separate gym. Along with that, you've got a stage and a music room at these five buildings. Under this program, we are looking at building nine new gymnasiums at nine elementary schools. What that gives us is the opportunity so that everybody could have a separate gym, everybody has a separate cafeteria, the gym program's not waiting for the lunch program to be cleaned up before the classes can get into the space, and also dedicated space for music, art, and physical education. You do have a couple of buildings with art on a cart. Some buildings have music in rooms that are not as acoustically designed. So we're looking at creating true music rooms and true art rooms, so the staff has the appropriate amenities in these rooms. So we're looking at visioning. I had mentioned earlier, this is a list of buildings that were accomplished with secure vestibules at the 2013 bond program, and we are looking at the four elementary schools and three middle schools of moving front offices, so that we are able to provide a direct entrance from a secure vestibule into the main office before someone is granted access to your schools. Part of the visioning, there are some themes that do happen at each of the grade levels. We are looking at, starting with the elementary schools, and this is one of the common themes, is front-entry landscaping. Part of the process that we walk through is really taking a look at curb appeal. When you come up to a building, do we shine and say, this is PCCS? We want to take a look at improving landscaping and improving the entries. Playground equipment at the elementary schools, giving opportunity for everybody to have equipment at each of the facilities that maybe some of the other buildings don't have. Main office additions and secure entries. We are looking at rightsizing the district, and when I mention that, a lot of your school buildings currently do have some strain with student population, and going back to the discussion of the 85% utilization, so that the district can introduce programs and allow for fluctuations in enrollments. There is a need in the district to provide classrooms at buildings. Again, we go back to the gym additions for the elementaries, this goes back to, not all the buildings have separate gyms, and the cafeteria and the gymnasium issue conflicts. Music and art. Classroom furniture is a big one. We've been working in the district for quite some time, and classroom furniture's always been on lists, we just haven't been able to get that up in the forefront. So this visioning and programming session allowed for the classroom furniture to make it onto high priority. And then learning commons furniture and upgrades. Back in the 90s, these were rooms that were called libraries. In the early 2000s, they were media centers or instructional media centers. So today, they are turning into learning commons. And when we talk about learning commons, these are really taking your media centers and allowing for programming changes, flexible furniture. These rooms are not just used today for books and quiet time, these rooms are used for collaborations, student projects, multiple classrooms coming in and using them as classroom spaces. So the furniture and upgrades in the learning commons. Middle schools, again, we talk about front entrance landscape, main office relocation, so we can get secure entries, the classroom furniture, and again, the learning commons at each of the buildings. The high schools, same thing with the front-entry landscape curb appeal. Each of the three high schools, part of the visioning sessions came out and brought up some needs with activities, not having homes to be able to do, you know, house events or take their program into a space, conflicts with scheduling. So we're looking at a new multipurpose room addition at each of the three high schools that will allow for both athletics and activities. Weight rooms expansions at Canton and Salem. An innovations hub at the, it'll be located at Canton High School, and this will allow for activities, it will allow for a home for robotics, it will have space that can be signed out during school and after school for programming needs. And one of the things we wanted to point out, that this is really a middle school through high school use area. Performing Arts Center, the Salem High School will finally be getting a much-needed improvement. This would include a dressing room and seat shop additions, and also a complete remodeling of the interior of the Performing Arts Center. A new nadatorium addition at the high school, at Plymouth High School. There was talk about each of the three high schools having a pool, and part of the issues with the pool is scheduling with all of the people, are all the programs that want to use the pool, and also allowing for middle schools to join in that programming. Classroom furniture at the high schools, learning commons upgrades. We are looking at a bandroom and storage expansion at Plymouth High School. And Starkweather Academy, we are looking at bringing some of the amenities that all the high schools have to Starkweather. We're looking at a gym addition with locker rooms, and some programming improvements at Starkweather. The other area that we looked at was the piece-up site. We are looking at a new stadium, and again, there was discussions during visioning of a serious problem with scheduling, and allowing all the programs to have adequate field time and use of the facilities without having to bus students to other facilities. This new stadium will be one of three stadiums on the site, and will allow for all middle school and high school activities. We're looking at site safety improvements, site fencing, signage, landscape, and entries to fields upgrades, it's really crowd control, and then trying to help the improvement, or improve the appearance of your athletic events, and add wayfinding, so people know how to get through the site and where they're going. We are looking at concessions buildings, restrooms, and team rooms for equity. Multipurpose synthetic turf practice fields. Again, this has to do with activities and athletics, and we're looking at taking a large grass area and turning that into a synthetic turf field, so that will allow for activities to take place around the clock, and not worry about muddy seasons with a natural grass turf. We're also looking at baseball and softball fields, synthetic turf infields. Some of the other buildings in the district, Allen Early Learning Academy, we're looking at classroom enhancements for the special education programs, preschool, and will include furniture upgrades. And then there is talk about a new maintenance facility in the visioning. Currently, your maintenance facility is quite dated, needs to be improved, and we're, you know, the district rents space because the current space is too small. So we are looking at relocating and adding a new maintenance facility on the park over by the salt domes. Graphically, taking that list, we chose three buildings to just show a little bit of each of what would happen at the schools. Some buildings that get more additions than others. One example of that is Byrd. Byrd is an example of a building that currently has a cafeteria and gym that share space, so Byrd will be looking at getting a gym, and they do not have a music room, so they'll be looking at getting a music room onto the gym, and we're looking at two classrooms. One of the nice things about putting the addition on the building is each of the classroom wings die at an exterior door to the outside. It's, we're going to look at creating a corridor for circulation throughout the building to help improve traffic flow and basic traffic around the building. Erickson Middle School, or Elementary School, I'm sorry, this is a building that we're looking at putting a new main office on the front. This will allow for the secure entry. Currently, the office is interior of the building, and it's not, we don't, we're not allowed to, or we're not allowed, we can't have that similar vestibule entrance that we have at the other schools. This building will be getting a gym. They currently have a combined cafeteria gym with a new music, our newer music room and stage. So this building will be just looking at a gym and the two classrooms. One of the items that is happening at Erickson Field and Hauling has to do with traffic flow, so we're looking at parking lot expansions, and creating parent drop-off loops where current parking exists, trying to utilize site and help alleviate some of the traffic concerns and safety on site. And the other building, Tonda, is an example of a building that's already has some of the equitable spaces that we've been talking about. They have a separate cafeteria, gym, and music room and art room. So this building will be looking at classroom additions. Picked a middle school, share with you a middle school. One thing I neglected to say before I started sharing plans is, for the visioning purpose and for the purpose of creating a bond issue, these are graphic representations of a potential solution, not the solution. So as we look at these, it's not indicating exactly where an addition will go, or, you know, basically, that's where it'll go. And it's not a solution, it's just matter, it's for our purposes to be able to price out a program. So at Pioneer, we're looking at changing the main office and moving that towards a courtyard, or maybe an addition. But we're looking at the ability to, we've got a parking lot up here with a natural path to get to the set of doors, so we're looking at a main office with a secure vestibule right off the parking lot, and then that would also serve the students coming into the building right off of the bus drive. The nice thing about doing that relocation is the current office, we would be able to build a couple of classrooms to help alleviate some of the growth at that building. Move into the high schools. Canton High School, over at Phase Three, we are looking at the innovations hub, and this is the activities located center and the proposed robotics, also looking at the multipurpose room addition, and then we're sharing and showing off the back the expansion of the weight room, and just general addition off of that building. Nice thing about the location of the addition is we are adjacent to the existing gym, and a nice, large parking lot, student parking lot, so if there were robotics competitions, the district could hold that on the weekends, and it wouldn't affect the school, and you'd have a nice, large parking lot to be able to host those events. Plymouth High School, we are looking at the front of the building, a bandroom and storage room addition. Coming off down by the athletics area, the gym, we're looking at putting the multipurpose gym, or multipurpose room addition on. And then also, again, we're looking at the nadatorium addition on-site, trying to locate things. Again, as the bond passes, we look at design, and some of these additions may move around, just trying to find spots on-site that would be the least disruptive to parking and traffic flows. Salem High School, down on the south side, we're looking at a multipurpose room addition and an expansion of the current weight room. And the big project at this building's dressing room and scene shop addition, and also in the blue, we've got a complete gut and remodel of the theater. Moving on to the park, activities and athletics, proposed third stadium on-site. That stadium would house the concession stand, ticket booths, toilets, and amenities that the other stadiums have. And also the synthetic turf, this is the area over by Canton High School, that would allow us to put synthetic turf down, so that multiple activities can be on that turf and not have to depend on the nice weather. Looking at varsity and softball, synthetic turf infields. And also, the final slide is locating on-site all the activity locations. We've got existing restroom facilities shown in purple. We are looking at new concessions, restrooms, drinking fountain for the varsity softball, freshman softball, and baseball areas in the middle of the campus, and also looking at a new concessions facility with restroom, storage, team rooms, football, for football, baseball, and soccer. Part of the concept here, when we were talking about improving wayfinding, improving fencing, and basically crowd control, we've got parking for athletics. The concept would be to come in off a parking into a ticket booth area, have concessions, have team rooms, and people can break off and go to the respective fields from that With that, we turn it over to technology.
Thank you, Bill. In our last bound, we put a significant amount of technology into our district, and in this plan, we are looking at a lot of refresh. And in this work, we utilized our technology department in taking a look at what their needs are going to be for the next 10 years. Most of what you see is going to be upgrades to our existing equipment. Again, and I mentioned earlier in the presentation that there may be technologies out there, but it'll give us the flexibility to add new technology as it comes online. So this is a list of all the different things in technology, from your classroom tools, the equipment that's used right in the classroom, the student devices, all of our students have the access to one-to-one devices. Again, the innovative technology piece where, you know, what else is new and can be utilized in the classroom in the next 10 years? All of our classrooms have interactive flat panels, those will need to be refreshed. They have a lifespan of only so long, and will need to be refreshed in the next 10 years. Same thing with the projectors at the middle school and the high school level. Our cabling systems that are in our classrooms will also need to be refreshed. Our staff devices, all of our teachers and staff members have laptop computers that would need to be refreshed. All of our buildings copy things daily, thousands and thousands, probably millions of copies in our district, and use of our copy machines, and our printers would need to be refreshed, scanners and things like that that are used in the classroom, or document cameras. Our public address systems, these are our PA systems, many of our buildings have very old old PA systems that are slowly wearing and need attention. Same thing with our video access, our, in all of our buildings, we have the ability to do morning announcements, and those, that equipment would also need to be upgraded as well. Access points, AP refresh, that is above my level of technology, but it is something that the technology pointed out would need to be refreshed as well. All of our servers that we have, we have hundreds of servers in our district that power our network. Our network switches, again, are things that, on the technical end, that need to be refreshed, our firewall, so we're not being hacked, storage that we use for our, all of our documents, things that we use through our Google platform, and also USB or UPS battery placements. If the power was to go out, we have battery backups for our technology, so we're still able to utilize our technology and our phone system, and those need to be upgraded as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Debbie, who's going to talk on the budget end of what this all would entail.
Agnes and I are going to tag team.
So. I know you can't see that, it's kind of difficult to summarize. We talked about assessment.
Agnes.
Sorry, we talked about assessment and talked about visioning. It's kind of hard to capture because you think about thousands of hours, everybody's sitting around, planning, documenting. The end goal is really to figure out, putting on a plan, on a drawing of what the square footage would be, how many square yards of carpet, how much square yards, you know, of roofing and so on. So the goal after all those meetings was to really sit down and create a document that's about this big, you know, hundreds of pages to truly, truly bring together the ideas and the cost, and kind of set them side by side and validate that everything that we absolutely need, need an assessment, you know, is equally, you know, costed out for every school. And the same thing on the visioning side, all the slides we just went through, you know, basically sitting down for every building, every facility, and putting numbers to that. So as a result, you know, after many hours of planning and doing, like Bill said, the preliminary drawings and plans, we kind of arrive at a budget. Now, this is a 10-year plan, so take it with a deep breath because it is a plan, and this is where we are now. We try to kind of put it into categories. We talked about assessment, we talked about visioning, and then we have technology kind of on its own. Within the assessment, there's things like buses, the envelope of the building, the necessities to keep the students, you know, dry, warm, and cozy, and then you have the visioning, which we kind of went through, are really things the students want, including the things that we don't even know what they're going to need in nine, 10 years. So that kind of looks into, really deep into the future. So that's, that's the overall assessment, and Debbie will talk to the details of the assessment.
Yep, so the green again is the assessment, that totals about 113.2. The visioning piece that was talked about, that totals about 140.8, and then the technology piece is about 20.8, so it's a grand total of 274.8 million dollars roughly, with all the costing that Agnes did and the multitude of gyrations of details that roll up to this piece of paper. And so, how are we going to pay for that? This is the funding plan, so if we go for a millage on March the 10th, 2020, for-
Bond.
Bond, sorry.
Bond.
Well, bond, but the bond will be going into three series, so to be sold into 2020, 2023, and 2026. At those magnitudes, we can generate 275 million dollars. Due to the nature of the increases in taxable value in this community across the PCCS attendance area, we're able to generate these dollars, sold in these three series, for maintaining a maximum of 4.02 mils, which is the current millage rate for debt service. So some of our debt is falling off because we're paying down those dollars, but we're also to generate more based on taxable values. It'll be point, 0.8, no, 0.98 millage rate in the first year, and an average of 1.65 mils over the life of the bonds. These are, again, 20-year bonds sold in three series, 2020, 2023, and 2026 at those magnitudes, and therefore, we could afford what we have been discussing this evening. So I believe Ms. Merritt is going to wrap us up.
All right, so there's been a lot of information shared with you today. I cannot contain my excitement when we talk about this year's theme is legacy, and we truly have an opportunity to leave a legacy of excellence for our students. In terms of how we can go about doing this, we have an opportunity to ask our community to invest in our schools and to do so without a millage rate increase, which is huge. We've heard a lot tonight about facilities, but we're really talking about equity of learning environments. When we think about 21st century classrooms and what our students need and what our students deserve, I'm so proud of our community, the history of us supporting our schools and what our students need. We know that the center or the cornerstone of any community are its strong schools. And as we've heard on a couple of occasions, people say that I often talk about it takes a village. So I really are asking you to consider allowing us to go out to our village and ask for consideration of this bond election. Once again, this would be in March, March 10th, 2020. The process for us would really be about education. That's not a lot of time, so we would need to really get this show on the road. Tonight is a first look. We would come back to you at our next board meeting on November the 26th, which would ask you at that time to vote on the, calling the bond election. We are required to go out by March 10th, bond, I think it's December 13th, we need to inform, so we would ask you to make that decision at the next board meeting. We, at this time, would like to open it up for questions that you may have, and then we'll wrap up. Prior to that, I just kind of want to put your eyes again on this slide because I think it's so key and so important, that term equity. When we talk about leaving this legacy of excellence for our students, equity means, once again, it doesn't matter where your zip code is, where you live, if it's Plymouth, if it's Plymouth Township, if it's Canton, if it's Salem, if it's Northville, every PCCS student, every PCCS family deserves a PCCS experience, and this is time to invest in our buildings, our schools, our students, more importantly, and our community. So with that, through a lens of equity, we've been fiscally responsible, good stewards of our taxpayers' money, we continue that good work moving forward with a zero-mil increase to our taxpayers. And what is the goal, to gain a competitive edge. When I talked in the beginning about stabilizing, we still have about 2,200 PCCS residents who are not choosing PCCS. When we think about a lens of innovation and competitiveness, how are we going to bring our students back? We're going to make sure that we're out there offering the most competitive, exciting, innovative opportunities, even things that we haven't thought about at this time, because as I said in the beginning, PCCS is the best and only option for our students and our community. So with that, open it up for questions from the board.
All right, colleagues, questions?
I have some comments, so I can wait.
Okay, we'll start with Member Borninski.
So what I'm wondering is, since it's going to be a pretty tight timeline, if the board did approve this, would it be possible to have a timeline of how we're going to roll out meetings with the community and all of that, you know, have that pretty well prepared in advance?
Absolutely. So as a part of this process, as you know, district employees are not able to ask or tell you how to vote. We can only have a factual campaign. So we would begin the process of organizing our advocacy group, so that's our community members that can do the yes aspect of this. And so, when I say take the show on the road, there's over 100, I think 110 locations that we, when we went out for the enhancement millage that we visited, that would include our civic organizations, our communities, all of our PTOs, kind of think of-
Boosters.
Boosters, any, you know, our senior citizens, and so we would give then, if we're able to get you to consider this at the next meeting, we've already started that process of really organizing, getting a schedule, and that would mean all hands on deck. So all board members, all administrative teams, our parent communities that would divide out, we'd give that schedule and see who could fit in to help us get this conversation on the road.
And we have to have public forums too on this.
We, yes, absolutely.
Do we need to have three, is that correct?
The three is for the boundaries. So one thing that I know that has been a question in this is, because we coupled this with the facilities and the boundaries, and so that work is still continuing. At this point, what we've said is, if any tweaks were to be made to the boundaries, we're not looking at anything that would be major, per our board policy, we would be required to have three community forums if we were going to make boundary decisions. If you think about this bond, if this is something that's approved, this construction that would really begin the expansion of some of our buildings, would probably be two years out before those additions would really shovel to ground in completion in that first phase. And so we'll, we'll look at our boundaries right now as finishing through this process. Once again, no boundary changes would be made before that next school year. If we were to look at any boundary changes, that would only be something that would be a minimum tweak, minimal tweak, then coming back, as our board policy says, to continue to explore it every two years to see if there is the need to then shift boundaries with what would be our expanded learning environments.
Okay, other questions?
Question for the finance. So we still have 14 more years to pay on the other debt for the other bond? We only got six years with payment?
I'll have to check on that because I don't know if it's 14 years off the top of my head, but go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, the last one was 20 years, correct?
Correct.
So, simple math for me, so we still have 14 more years, plus we're asking for another 20, is that like a total of 34 years?
Yeah, so this one-
It's kind of-
Yeah, so every series is 20 years resets, so each series is 20 years.
Okay.
So if we're doing 2020, 2020 pays off in 2040, 2023 pays off in 2043, and 2026 pays off in 2046.
So this bond gets approved, how many years of debt do we have total?
It would be to 2046.
2046, and then everything would be paid off, correct?
Well, yes, but we pay off the older ones in the meantime.
And from the last one, correct? Okay. And with the enrollment, with the elementary school and middle school and high school, who would answer questions from that?
John, can you speak into the microphone a little bit?
The enrollment for elementary school, high school, and middle school?
So we'll ask Paul to come on up and ask your question, and we can see who can jump in to help.
What was the prior year's enrollment from where you started at?
Actually, if I go back in those slides, so I'm not sure where the clicker.
Which one, Paul?
The enrollment slides.
2008, 2009, do you have that, or no?
Just which level? Yeah, actually, we do have that. Actually, when we looked at it, we really started back in the 2008 timeframe.
Did we do that, I think we looked at that last time?
Yeah.
It was at the work session, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, our last.
The workshop?
And at the EPO meeting last week, we were doing it.
Right, no, I'm just trying to, because I just want to make sure that, because I, all I see is 2013.
Yes, if you, so when we first had our workshops, we started looking back at 2008, at the Finance and Operations Meeting, we were still looking at that information. If you recall, our conversation is when we, at the point in which we rightsized our schools, that's where we picked up here. So at the last bond, we're looking at the continuation going forward. So for tonight, we just wanted to focus on-
You started out 2013?
We started out 2013, because that's the last time when we closed and repurposed buildings, and so that, that is at that point where we're looking forward, that now our buildings, that goal was to get to a certain capacity. Some of our buildings have really stretched beyond that capacity, and so we're looking at that and how we're going forward from there.
And one last question for the high school, for the tenants, can you go to that? Are we losing students if we go to the green?
Yeah, so one of the things we took a look at is, again, you're graduating 1,450 to 1,500 students, you're bringing 1,100, so the question is, you really have to transition 400 homes every year for the next four to six years to really stay level at that 6,000 mark. It's going to be a challenge to do that, but we're not seeing this-
Not seeing a problem, housing market's good here?
No, actually, I mentioned, the housing, the availability of like raw tracts of 100-acre lands are gone. You're going to see some 20-acre parcels, which may result in anywhere from 10 to 20 homes, but the large 200 unit developments, again, we've did a pretty extensive research with those 10 major developers. They're about 85% built out or allocated, so again, those homes are in that middle market where you're going to see that middle school increase, and that's why you'll see the projections of middle school actually going back up, whereas the elementary school, you're not seeing a lot of those first-time homeowners coming into the district at that level, so those are reflected in that K-12 cohort, as well as breakdown for individual.
What you pretty much see is flat enrollment, and something that we talked about at previous workshops, is although the birth rate is down, I would say a positive piece is that people are still choosing Plymouth-Canton, and so-
That's a great point. So we actually dove down into the actual individual building, and so historically, the district only captured about 3%, 3.5% of those eligible kindergarten births. You're actually, even though the enrollment birth's down, you're almost up to 5%. So again, that goes back to the programming that you're offering. And again, some of this you'll see is, you know, how does that impact with charter schools or other competing schools? We know some of the private schools have closed because of enrollment, so again, we've taken those into consideration, as well as the demographic piece of the housing stock, so.
I know, I think early on in this process, people thought that we would be looking at possibly building a new school, the feeling like South Canton is exploding, and that's positive that we have the bill, but as Paul shared, it's really more of a stable, there's not a lot of land, so when we look out moving forward, we have the ability to look at some programmings within our buildings, get some of these dedicated spaces without having, just make some slight additions without having to do new builds.
Correct. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on John's questions. With regard to the decline in the enrollment, is the primary reason low birth rate? I think we talked about that in workshop, but I just want to make sure that we all hear that.
No, so absolutely, so if you take a look at the next 10 years, Wayne County's projected was over 65,000 students. If you take a look back to 2000, which was the highest birth rate for Wayne County, there's about 3 to 5, 3 to 4,000 less births every year for the next five years. So you just take that, matriculate it out, that's how you're ended up with that, that large decrease. You're still going to have inbound migration, schools of choice, obviously, you know, that's another consideration that we're taking in, into the projections, but again, it's just hard to outpace that decline birth rate. Oakland County's about 45,000 students less in the next 10 to 15 years, and so those are some other challenges we're dealing with, some of your peers of, a lot of people love Plymouth-Canton, their kids graduate, they don't sell the house, they stay here, and my aunt and uncle live on Nantucket, and my cousins are all in their 30s, 40s, 50s, and now they're starting to have kids, but we're not seeing that huge transition of housing like you would, let's say, in a South Line or Brighton where they have targeted very young family, first-entry-level homes, and those types of developments, so.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Member Brooks, and then we'll come back to you, Member-
Yeah, just one for the benefit of those who don't know, what is the definition of a nadatorium?
I will defer to Mr. Bill Weinrock. I could answer it as an architect, but I'll- Mr. Weinrock, nadatorium versus a pool complex, so.
We have a lot of discussions on this. So putting the pool in the bond, pool is a singular room, so the nadatorium piece has to do with your, your pool, locker rooms, bleachers, and a entry lobby, so it's really a facility and not just the pool.
Okay, thanks.
Also, you're required to have locker rooms that go onto the pool deck. So if you build a pool, you have to have the locker rooms right there.
Okay, Member McQueen?
So I wanted to say that being on this committee, it was a lot of work, I'm sorry, the administration really did a lot of work on this. Also, a lot of the building administrators, they're very collaborative, because the middle school principals, I mean, they need things for their kids, you know, pool for their swimming, they need track, and they are, they are very well aware of the budget constraints, and so they are very happy to have it built at the park and then share it. And so they really are working together because they know how important it is for the community. And so they, this is really to provide equity to all of our students, so that regardless, you know, my kids went to Smith, and it's a great school, but it has a gym that was- but it has a gym that was built sixty years ago, and they also eat in there. And so it'd be really nice for children to be able to have a gym and a cafeteria. It's a lot less shuffling during the day. It's just when people come in and they look at the schools, if they could see, oh, look at how lovely these schools are. Because we not only want to get the twenty-five hundred kids that are going to charter schools, but living our boundaries back, but that would also, because of proposal A, it's kids in seats that provide our funding, and that would provide more funding for all of our students and all these increased opportunities. Because when I look at this and I, and we, here Mrs. Rail talk about innovation and the things that she has envisioned to offer our students, if we could offer that to our students, they would really rise to the top, I think.
And to piggyback off of that, and I was at Helsing just yesterday, and also looking at Erickson, we do need to look at the parking lot situation. I mean, that is a safety issue. Just last night, I mean, people were parked all over the place because of how it's structured. I mean, those are some basic things that we talk about that we just need, that are part of this plan. Any other questions? I have a couple, if you don't mind. Could we take a look at the resolution for calling the bond election that's in the minutes?
It's in the minutes for what?
It's in the agenda, sorry. I'm sorry, it's in the agenda, not the minutes. It's right before the presentation. Okay.
Sorry.
My fault, saying the wrong.
Page eighteen.
Thank you. If you could scroll down to exhibit A. So a couple of things here. One, to echo member Brooks's question, what is an auditorium? So I asked, after I read this, I asked a lot of my friends, do you know what an auditorium is? And most of them said no. So I get that we need to have that on the language based on what it really defines. But I'm wondering if we're gonna take this to the community, should we at some point put a little asterisk and at the bottom define what it is so people know what they're voting on? That's just one of my wonderings in terms of ensuring that people know what an auditorium is. And that also comes from the M A S B workshop I attended over the weekend. This was a big debate in one of the West Side Bond Proposals that went in. Some people just said, I don't know what I'm voting on when I see an auditorium. And so I just throw that out there as a wondering that I have in terms of, do we need to clarify that for the community? I get we need to keep the auditorium in the item, but it may be in parentheses or an asterisk, put what it is so people know what it is. I know you guys discussed that in great detail, but it's, I have to put that out there. Okay?
I believe that most of this language is prescribed by law.
Mr. Crowley is here, our Miller Canfield attorney.
Thank you for that.
An auditorium, it's Latin.
Yeah.
So, I know that's confusing, but, so I don't think you can put, well, I know you can't put an asterisk on it.
Okay.
So you have, I think you have two choices, keep an auditorium or go to an alternate might be. So I think we use the word auditorium because we're describing the facility, the pool, the locker rooms, the diving boards, everything. And it's an indoor building. I think as an alternative, you might be able to say swimming pool facility, unless anybody had any.
Okay.
That's my only thought on that.
Okay.
Anybody have any thoughts on swimming pool facility?
Yeah, I think for some of the people that wish they, Plymouth had a swimming pool, it would go better. Because they're gonna say, what's an auditorium? I thought we're gonna get a swimming pool, so.
Member Bernice? Member Bernice?
I, I think an auditorium describes it better, but I think that we're really going to have to explain it well in how we communicate with the community.
That's a good point. So maybe that's another thing to think about as we go out, explain to people what really, what an auditorium is. All right, I just wanted to throw that out there as conversation because it is something that we want to make sure that everybody knows about as we talk about what's in the bond language. We don't, we want to make sure people are aware of what's here. The other thing I think about as I listen to the presentation, I heard two things, innovative programs and ADA accessibility. And I'm wondering if that could be also captured in the bond language.
So, you know, this bond language is prescribed by state law, and the most important part of it is to put the purposes in there. The voters, it's a legal document, the voters are giving us the authorization to do these projects. And the goal is to, in this, the most important part is to capture all the projects to allow the district to do all the projects they want to do, as well as flexibility. Over the years, we have added some, pushing the envelope a little bit by adding some descriptive words, safety, security, energy conservation. We might be able to add a little bit more. I hesitate to add too much. I don't, it can't be a sales, but to provide explanations is okay. And if you wanted to come up with maybe some other, so if you see on the remodeling, we talk about safety, security, energy conservation, other purposes. And then down at the bottom, we talk about traffic flow, we're kind of the keys that we hit on as descriptors for the purposes. I just did one recently where we said it was important for the district to have, talk about HVAC, their buildings were very poorly ventilated, old buildings. We talked about heating, cooling ventilation, so we did do that. So I don't know if you were thinking about as far as.
Well, I just think having, looking at ADA accessibility is huge, and that is such an important thing to make sure that our voters know about, that that is, that's a priority for us.
I don't know if it asks the construction professionals, I think, I mean, by law, you have to have that. I mean, I don't know, I think people are aware of that or not or. But if you wanted to come up with some other thoughts as purposes, we could consider them, for sure.
I think it's important when you look at, I think the work is on our education and getting around to explain because we also don't want to have ballot fatigue where people are so tired of reading that either, you know, they don't want to continue on or, and so I think you have to balance all of that as well.
Yeah, so, you know, this is a legal document, we do put some stuff in here, but your bond campaign is really where all this stuff goes. I did, Debbie did hand out, we did put together a do's and don'ts for the election. Just wanted to let you know that, you know, school can use their resources to inform, you can advocate. And so we've put this together, set forth the law, and it puts together some do's and don'ts applicable to school districts as to come of the questions we come up with. As board members, you are definitely allowed to advocate, but you can't use school resources, so.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments?
Before continuing on, I would like to just go on record to be able to read the resolution that we're asking you to consider.
Sure. Member McQueen, would you do that, please?
I will read this, certainly. So you want to follow along, we're on page eighteen. Plymouth Canton Community Schools, County of Wayne, State of Michigan, at a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools, County of Wayne, Michigan, the school district held in the school district on the twenty-sixth day of November two thousand nineteen at seven P M. local time. The following preamble and resolution were offered by a member and supported by a member. Whereas the school district is contemplating undertaking various capital improvements to facilities within the school district, which include the remodeling, equipping, re-equipping, furnishing, and refurnishing of school buildings, performing arts center, activity athletic fields, playgrounds, and other facilities, the erecting, equipping, and furnishing of a new stadium, activity and athletic facilities, and a maintenance storage facility, and secure entryway classroom, gymnasium, and auditorium additions to existing school buildings, activity and athletic fields, and other facilities, the acquisition and installation of instructional technology, infrastructure, and equipment, the preparation, development, and improvement of sites at school buildings, playgrounds, activity and athletic fields, and other facilities, and the purchase of school buses collectively, the projects. Whereas the school district is of the opinion that in order to finance the projects, a bond proposal should be submitted to the electors at a special school election. Whereas the school district is a Michigan general power school district operating under the revised school code as amended, and as such, the school district's elections are governed by Michigan Election Law, Act one hundred sixteen, Public Acts of Michigan, nineteen fifty-four, as amended, the Michigan Election Law. Whereas the school district desires to submit a bond proposal to the electors at a special school election to be held on March tenth, two thousand twenty, which election will be conducted by the school district's election coordinator. Whereas Michigan Election Law requires the school district certify the ballot language for any proposals to be submitted for voter approval at an allowable election date to the school district's election coordinator, not later than four P M. on the twelfth Tuesday before the election date. Whereas the school district desires to approve and certify the above referenced bond proposal and to authorize the superintendent or her designee to submit the certified bond proposal to the school district's election coordinator. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools, County of Wayne, Michigan, that, one, the school improvement bond proposal attached hereto as exhibit A is hereby approved and certified and shall be submitted to the electors at a special school election to be held on March tenth, two thousand twenty. Two, the superintendent or her designee are authorized to submit the above referenced proposal to the school district's election coordinator on or before four P M. on December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, which is not later than the twelfth Tuesday before the special school election to be held on March tenth, two thousand twenty. Three, the superintendent or her designee is further authorized to take any and all action required under Michigan Election Law with regard to the special school election to be held on March tenth, two thousand twenty. And four, all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby rescinded.
Thank you. Thank you for reading it out loud.
That was a lot of legalese there.
All right, so if there are any questions that you could think of before we come back for the twenty-sixth, please get that information to us so we can get the questions to you. We will then plan to come back on the twenty-sixth, answer any questions that we may have, and then ask for your consideration to go out to the voters to ask for, I'm using my right words, factual information, to ask for consideration of this bond election. And once again, with this bond election, that would be zero millage increase and have the ability to, over three series bonds, have two hundred and seventy-five million in which we could support, we could, what am I trying to use? We could realize all of these needs for our students and for our school community.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item three. Nick, could you put the agenda back on, please? So we are at teaching and learning with Beth Rail with the state assessment results. Looking at the fact that it's nine oh four and that we've reviewed the state assessment results packet, it's a hundred and forty-some pages long. I am asking my board colleagues to see if that is something that you would like to put off to December, or do you want to stick to it and go through it?
I will share, although your packet is a hundred and forty pages long. We're doing a high level tonight. We just wanted to make sure that the board had all of the information. We wouldn't be going through each of those slides tonight.
It is, I am open.
Good for December.
You're good for December? Others?
If we postpone to December, will we be going into more depth?
So if we're not doing any tonight, then we'd have to, because we'd have to look at what we're planning. I think right now on the calendar, we have our equity workshop was scheduled for December. So originally, we were going to do the aggregate results tonight and then have some further information on our subgroup data on, in December. So we'd have to see how that would all come together with what else is on the agenda. It might push then the equity work to a future meeting if we were to do that.
So it would mean a longer December meeting if we're gonna try to do all of that. So again, I'm asking for feedback. We could, what do you think, Beth, half an hour today or?
Yeah, it would take about twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes.
For the high level overview.
What do you all think?
Or how long would it take to do the whole thing?
Like a deeper dive in December, how long would that take?
Probably double that time.
Okay.
And then there's questions.
Then there's questions, exactly.
That way it gives Patrick a chance and Leonardo.
Oh, then we'll be here till midnight.
Well, we only have one meeting in December, right?
Right.
On the school board.
So, we're talking about doing a high level tonight and then at a later date, possibly December, getting into the disaggregated.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm okay if we keep a high level tonight.
Okay. All right, let's, why don't we go through a quick high level overview and we can, we skip that perspective.
All right. At this time, then, it's my pleasure to introduce Anthony Ruela, our executive director of middle school data and school improvement, who is going to share our state assessment results. Again, this is the high level overview. And then in the board packet is also disaggregated results that we would return and dive deeper into.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to share the district assessment data with you tonight. We're gonna be looking at the results of the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year alongside with three-year trends. And like was mentioned earlier, there are a lot of slides in your packet that aren't gonna be in the presentation because in previous presentations, board members have said that they'd just like to look things, at things in graphs and tables and wanting to make sure you have the opportunity to do that now and at your, at your leisure. So the results that we're gonna explore this evening are grounded in the execution, the strategies contained in our district improvement plan, which is rooted in an analysis of student data and aligned with our five-year dynamic plan. So I want to remind the board that in keeping with the teaching and learning shared value of simplicity, our department has focused the work in the dynamic plan into three comprehensive and aligned strategic objectives revolving around culturally responsive practices, a comprehensive MTSS framework, and a vertically aligned pre-K-12 curriculum. So before I really get into some specific results, I'm gonna go really, really high level for you here and present a few key insights we've gleaned in our review of the data. First, with respect to ELA, across the three through grade eleven assessments, we're seeing varied performance by grade level and cohort. In talking about this, you know, we know, and you guys know, that we've done a lot of curriculum work over the past two years. And in, in looking at our results, we believe that the leveraging of our instructional coaches and really looking at where we can, some detailed item analysis is going to lead to more consistent gains in the future. With respect to math, you're gonna see increases in proficiency in grades six, seven, eight, and eleven over a three-year period. And over the past four years, we've done a lot of work to align secondary math instruction, vertical alignment between middle school and high school teachers. We've also aligned and refined our middle school math acceleration practices. A few years ago, if you remember, the board approved the update of the connected math resource at the middle level so that we had a version that was aligned to the current state standards. And in addition, in talking to our curriculum coordinators, we really believe that we're now seeing the impact of the district's multi-year focus on improving mathematical instructional strategies, where students are really talking about the math and taking their learning deeper rather than just learning how to use algorithms to solve problems. In addition, we're gonna, we see consistent increases in the measures of growth in our English learners using the WIDA assessment. We're gonna dig that into a little bit deeper later on. And then finally, towards the end of the presentation, I'm gonna share some data that demonstrates that we're making positive movements towards closing our academic achievement gaps. The state assessments that we're going to look at this evening are the SAT. SAT, there's two components, the evidence-based reading and writing and the math component. And those two components are part of the Michigan Merit Exam along with ACT Work Keys and then the M-Step in the Science and Social Studies that measures student progress on state content standards as well as college readiness. We're also going to look at the M-Step. M-Step is the State Summit of Assessment taken each spring by students in grades three through seven in Language Arts and Math. Science and Social Studies is assessed in grades five, eight, and 11. This past spring, the state transitioned from the M-Step in grade eight to the PSAT 8-9 to assess our eighth-grade students in evidence-based reading and writing, which is ELA equivalent, as well as math. And the state has done this because we believe that using the PSAT 8-9 is really going to help us know whether we're preparing students to be college-ready. And then finally, we'll be looking at our WIDA results, as I mentioned earlier. WIDA stands for the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment, and that's the WIDA access for English language learners. It's an English proficiency, English language proficiency assessment that's given to our K-12 students. So starting with the SAT, as I mentioned, it's the Michigan Merit Exam component that measures reading, writing, and language. That component is called evidence-based reading and writing. It also measures mathematics. There are two data points we're going to look at. We're going to look at the mean scale score and then we're also going to look at percent met benchmark. The mean scale score is what most people are familiar with with respect to college admissions scores. But percent met benchmark, what that means is that is a data point set by the College Board that represents a 75% likelihood that the student that meets that benchmark is prepared to earn a C or better in a first semester college course. So really, the percent met, the percent met benchmark is a measure of college readiness. So the first slide we're going to look at is the 11th grade SAT mean scale score. And I just, in essence of time, I'm going to skip over the charts, but it's the same data. The mean scale score you see here, it's a three-year trend. Plymouth Canton Community Schools is in the green up top. Statewide is the yellow, and then Wayne County is the orange. And you can see the three-year trend in scale score scores. Again, the state and the county are represented alongside our data just so that we can see trends over time. With respect to the mean scale score, we do see a slight decrease over time. Someone talked to a little bit more about that when we look at the evidence-based reading and writing. So for evidence-based reading and writing, we're going to look at the percent met benchmark. So we see in 2017 that we started at 79.7%. And in 2019, we're at 74.6% of our students meeting the benchmark for college readiness and evidence-based reading and writing. And you notice that trend also for the state in Wayne County. And when we talk to our PSAT representatives at the state level and we'd started digging into our own data, we see that the three areas where we're noticing that drop is the subtests of command of evidence, which really is students using textual information to answer questions, expression of ideas, and standard English conventions. So expression of ideas and standard English conventions are where students have to revise paragraphs. They're actually paragraphs, it's not their own student writing, but they're revising paragraphs for sentence structure, usage, grammar, and development and organization. So we've worked, I've worked with Carrie Fromm, who is our curriculum coordinator for Language Arts, Media, and Library. And she's working with high school teachers and coaches to really pull apart and do an item analysis to see what types of errors students are making and where in the curriculum they can strengthen instructions so that students aren't making those errors moving forward. With respect to math, we see a little bit of a different trend here with respect to mathematics over three years. This increase over our starting point at 2017 and talking with our curriculum department, again, really looks like our focus on instructional practices are paying off. For example, specifically, we've done a lot of vertical alignment in grades eight through 10, teachers that are teaching algebra courses, really looking at their instruction and the types of activities and assessments that they're using and designing to increase the rigor with respect to depth of knowledge. So students really taking the information they're learning and going deeper. Moving on to the M-Step, as I mentioned earlier, that's our grade three through seven Summit of Assessment in English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And we're going to talk about the PSAT 8-9 also. It is a grade eight Summit of Assessment starting last year and parallel with the SAT, measuring reading, writing, and language as well as math. Little bit of a difference for the PSAT 8-9. The way that we are going to look at it, we're going to talk about proficiency, which really is met benchmark. The state of Michigan is using the term proficiency or percent proficient. And it's analogous to the percent met benchmark. And while the SAT is predicting the likelihood of students being successful in first semester college courses, the PSAT, whether it's PSAT 8-9 or the PSAT 10, that really looks at, you know, is a student on the path to be college-ready by 11th grade? So it's a little bit of a different, but it's all aligned. So starting in English Language Arts, I'm going to, the first graphs you're going to see are going to be trends over time. We're not going to spend a lot of time on each one of those trends because I want to spend some more time talking about the cohort data because that's something that the board has expressed a lot of interest in earlier. So you could see a trend line there for ELA. And again, just bringing your attention to the fact that Plymouth Canton Community Schools is in green. So this is for our third grade M-Step performance over the past three years. So our fourth grade performance. Students performing for fifth grade, M-Step ELA. And then moving on to sixth grade. Seventh grade. And then eighth grade. I'm going to spend just a little bit of time here because I do want to point out the change in the test from the 2018 year to the 2019 year. So you see their performance on the M-Step, how it changed from the 2017 to the 2018 year. Real strong performance in our eighth graders in ELA, very different to the trends that we were seeing around the state. There's no line there because we really can't make a specific comparison between growth from the M-Step to the PSAT because they're two different assessments. Where the M-Step is just measuring grade level content standards for eighth grade, in this particular case is ELA. The PSAT 8-9, you're really looking at Common Core standards in grades both eight and nine. It is an assessment that's given to ninth graders as well. So it's a different assessment. The great thing here is that in looking at our performance, just under 80% of our eighth graders last year are projected to be college-ready by 11th grade in Language Arts, right? Great performance from our students. So looking at some cohort trends, whoops, I'm going to go specifically to graphs. So what we see here is our fifth graders from 2018-19, okay? So if I step it back one year in 1718, that's their percent proficient as fourth graders. And the year before that is percent proficient as third graders. So our fifth graders last year are just about 4.6% more proficient than they were as third graders just three years previous. So that cohort group's showing some nice improvement over time. Over three years, that's about a 6% change, which in talking with our data consultants over at RISA, Joe Musial, a 2% year-over-year change in a cohort growth is something to be, to really celebrate. So thinking about a 6% change over three years, that's really something that we should be proud of with respect to our fifth graders from last year. Our sixth graders last year, we've kind of talked about this phenomenon before. You can see last year, our sixth graders were 58.5% proficient, which is lower than the proficiency that they had in fifth grade. And we've talked about that as being a challenge. And it is a challenge across the state, talking with Joe Musial. Fifth to sixth graders, most often, we do see a drop in performance, you know, even within the same cohort of students. On a positive note, at the end of sixth grader, at the end of sixth grade, that cohort has a higher level of proficiency than they did in fourth grade. So there was a drop, but in terms of a three-year period, that cohort is a little bit up in terms of about three percentage points, 3% change in terms of growth and proficiency.
Anthony, before we go on, I know we discussed this in SPA, but I just want to make sure that we actually talk about it here. What is the district doing to curb that decline from fifth to sixth grade?
So in terms, first of all, at the middle school, we have the data in front of us and we're talking about it. One of the things that, and we'll see a little bit of a difference in math here coming up. But part of it is making sure that we transition students and students are comfortable in their new buildings and we're giving them the attention that they need. The next piece after that, and this is, you know, one of the conversations we're having with Dr. Brady with respect to the curriculum, making sure that the curriculum is aligned vertically and that there's not, there's not something that we're missing with respect to gaps in instruction.
And I think, just in terms of fifth grade, are we doing enough to prepare fifth grade, fifth graders for sixth grade kind of work? So I know that there's a curriculum alignment issue there, but as well as a rigor in terms of the kind of work that's expected of them?
So one, what I would say is like, that's part of the focus of the instructional coaches, right? Really, that digging down in and now that we are working on, you know, a different model of instruction with respect to workshop at the elementary level, now really looking and digging in deeper to, with the instructional coaches to make sure that, kind of like we've talked about, I talked about a little bit with how they're doing that item analysis on the SAT, really backing that down. And I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing at the middle school with respect to six, eight, looking at the PSAT and pulling that apart. But yeah, it definitely is bringing it back down.
Thanks.
So in seventh grade, so this is last year's seventh graders at about 64.2%, which was an increase from, about a seven, seven and a half percent increase from sixth grade, but still not where they were in fifth grade, which is a concern, something that we were just speaking to with respect to making sure that that drop doesn't happen. Looking specifically at last year's eighth graders, again, consistently, we see an increase from sixth grade to seventh grade across our cohorts over time. And then last year, we had even a larger increase when you look at the PSAT. Again, it's hard to make that comparison, but do definitely want to highlight that based upon the PSAT, about 80% of our eighth graders that left us, left the middle school last year, entered high school, projected to be college-ready in 11th grade with respect to Language Arts, which is certainly something to celebrate. So with respect to next steps in ELA, and we talked about it a little bit, really focusing on curriculum, professional learning around balanced literacy for staff, and really leveraging our instructional coaching to, now that we have made the curricular adjustments that we've made, really leveraging that instructional coaching to impact what happens in the classroom to elevate all students. Talked a little bit about the PSAT. We've done the past three years, actually in preparation, training administrators and teachers on the PSAT. This past year, well, this past fall, we had math and ELA teachers from the eighth grade get-together with Michigan Association of Secondary Principals came in and did professional development here on site, really taking apart the PSAT, looking at, doing an item analysis by their building, by the district, taking that back to their buildings and inservicing their colleagues across content areas about what the SAT looks like, what are the questions, and how can we, again, design activities and assessments that really challenge students to think not only at a higher level, but also at a deeper level? Moving on to math. Just looking at our proficiency trends of third grade. Fourth grade. Fifth grade. Whoops. Moving on to middle school. Sixth grade. Seventh grade. And here we have eighth grade, again, recognizing that we're moving to PSAT 8-9 in eighth grade. Looking at our cohort, whoa. Okay, I was like, what happened to that slide? It was in the wrong place there. Looking at our cohort proficiency trends. An interesting piece, looking at our fourth to fifth graders as a proficiency drop and being, excuse me, I'm sorry. A proficiency drop from fourth to fifth grade is something that's concerning and having some conversation with Dr. Brady. One of the things that they're working on now is we're doing math pilots, looking at that math resource. So along with the instructional practices that we're working on in elementary school, also doing, piloting different resources. So our sixth grade cohort from last year. We talked briefly about the drop from fifth grade to sixth grade. I do want to note that last year's cohort, sixth grade cohort, did not drop from fifth grade to sixth grade with respect to math. And this is the first time that we've seen that in, you know, as long as I've been doing this job. So I think that speaks to a lot of the curriculum work that we've been doing at the middle school and really focusing on aligning our teaching of mathematical practices in the classroom. That same positive trend was carried over in our seventh grade data as well as in our eighth grade cohort data. So I got to slide back a little bit because that one slide was out of, out of order a little bit. So I apologize for that. But again, what we're working on across the district is looking at the elementary curriculum and we're piloting new resources. We've implemented the multiple math pathways in the middle school that I mentioned earlier. And again, really relying on our, you know, our instructional coaches to support what's going on in the classroom. Just going to slide through that real quick. Looking at social studies. For social studies, we just have proficiency trends, not really looking at a cohort because if you remember, the social studies assessments are given in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade. So that's a pretty long time span to look at a cohort of students. The other piece too is, as you're aware, the social studies standards have just changed. So there may be a situation as we move forward in the future that that cohort data will be something that we'll look at in a different way, but we just haven't at this point. So here's our proficiency in fifth grade M-Step. There's the eighth grade M-Step. And there's the 11th grade M-Step, okay? One of the things in terms of, and you'd asked before about next steps and what we're doing forward. I know for Language Arts, Dr. Brady and Carrie Fromm will be. doing forward, I know for language arts, Dr. Brady and Carrie Fromm will be here in a few weeks, I believe, to present even more in-depth on the language arts initiatives that there, we're moving on. With respect to math, I believe that's in February, that Kathy Williams will be out to present. Rania Hamood is not on the docket to present this year, but, you know, again, a lot of the work that they're doing is working to unpack the new social studies standards. At the middle school and high school, new resources are being piloted. And one of the things that is, is something that Ms. Hamood is really working with is, again, leveraging instructional coaches, looking at how informational text and source documents are used in social studies classrooms, and thinking about, okay, so how, how do we help social studies teachers use those documents in a way where students can improve what we talked about with the PSAT, that citing contextual evidence when they're, when they're answering questions? So we're really going to be brief here because we have no science data for you. And the reason we, is because the science assessment for the past two years has been a field test. Any data that we get is very limited and only is for, for local use, not for publication. The science test, however, will be operational this spring, spring of 2020. So that means that next year at this time, I'll be able to have results to present and share with you. Some of the science work, again, is, is curriculum-related. New curriculum's been rolled out at the middle level and elementary schools. So those, those units are being implemented now. There's been a instructional shift in terms of practices that our, our teachers are engaged in. For example, at the middle level, students are learning how to write scientific explanation pieces using the claim, evidence, and reasoning framework. And this writing piece, there's one per unit, and it's graded using a district-created rubric. This requires students to use evidence that's gathered, whether it's labs, conversion tables, whether they've created a scientific model, to support a claim. And the utilization of this claim, evidence, reasoning framework is aligned to the processes that students use to write persuasive and argumentative essays in language arts, as well as those essays to write when they're, they're supporting a claim using document-based essays in social studies. Moving on to the WIDA, so the WIDA access is an English language proficiency assessment for grades K through 12. It measures listening, reading, speaking, and writing. What we're going to look at this year is, we're actually going to look at the student growth measures. That's the measure that is presented by the state on the school dashboards. And it really gives us a good idea of how students who are English learners progress over time. Proficiency is a little bit difficult to measure because students, once they become proficient, actually exit as receiving English learner services. So the data that we're going to be looking at are students who haven't yet reached that proficiency level because they're continuing to, to receive English learner services. So the graph that you see here, this is all district data. The blue line represents the percentage of students who are demonstrating above-average growth from year to year. Okay? So that means students that, these are all the students who actually haven't exited. So these are the students who haven't exited from EL services, but still demonstrated either above-average growth, average growth, or below-average growth. And in order to, to demonstrate growth, it has to be year-over-year. So there needs to be two consecutive assessments that the students have taken. So for students that have two consecutive assessments, we went from that group of students presenting above-average growth was 38.7% three years ago. Now that group, we, we have 46.5% of students last year demonstrating above-average growth. So just to kind of encapsulate this, what we do want to see is, we want to see that blue line have a steeper, a steeper grade than the orange line. Because the orange line is average growth, right? And average growth is good, but we want our students to have above-average growth. So the fact that the blue line is steeper than the orange line is great. What's even better is the fact that the percentage of students demonstrating below-average growth has dropped greater than 10 points over the past three years. So that below-average-growth line, like, we want to get that down to zero. And, and we've done really stellar work in dropping that over 10 points over that three-year time period. So some of the things that the board has done to support this work has been hiring, approving the hire of ELD teachers at the elementary level, increasing FTE at the middle school. But, you know, the staff, having staff is one thing, and we've just done a whole lot of professional development with respect to different structures for both our ELD teachers, as well as our classroom teachers with respect to SIOP, and just what are the, the best practices for our teachers to use in supporting the growth of our, our EL students? So just a few key demographic insights that I'm going to share with you, and, and in a preview of, of our, our future work, is we're going to look in the next slides, the changes in the academic achievement gaps over the past three years. And, and you have all these slides in your handout. And we're going to show some, some promising data, but we believe in teaching and learning that an academic achievement gap of any size is unacceptable. And the focus of our work is to eliminate these gaps wherever they exist. In the next few slides, a couple highlights that you'll see is a consistent narrowing of the proficiency gap in ELA and math between students who are of economic disadvantage and those who aren't in grades three and five, as well as six and eight in the SAT. I want you to be looking for a narrowing in the proficiency gap in ELNA, in, ELA and math between students with IEPs and those who do not have IEPs in grades three and five, three through five. And then looking at the, for, in middle school, students in grades six through eight are Black and African-American student population, that there's, we're going to see a seven-point narrowing of the achievement gap in ELA, and a 5.7-point narrowing of the achievement gap in math. so just to look at a, a few things here, so this is achievement gap trend in grades three and five in ELA, okay? And I mentioned, gave you the preview for our students who are economically disadvantaged or students with disability. And when, so when I say there's a negative 5.3% change, that's a, that's straight percentage points. It's not, you know, a, a percent change. It's, it's straight percentage point change. So last year's gap between students who were not economically disadvantaged and students who were economically disadvantaged was 27.4 points. But the year, in 2016, 17, it was 32.7 points. So over those three years, we're seeing a narrowing of that gap. In grades six through eight, we see a similar narrowing for students who are economically disadvantaged, as well as a large narrowing for students who are Black or African-American between 16, 17, and 18, 19. One of the things I want to point out on this slide is, in the categories for Hispanic students or two more race, or students of two or more races, those are both categories where the sample size is pretty small. So by grade level, so those two categories are more apt to swing in percentages by a lot. So that's just, you'll see those two categories, big swings in both directions, and a lot of that's related to the fact that they're smaller sample sizes. In grades three through five in math, we see gaps decreasing for economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities. I mean, we see them in, in quite a few areas, but when we're looking at five and, and six percent, six point changes over three years, that's something that we should be celebrating. Grades six through eight in math, we see less of a change for our economically disadvantaged population, a little bit larger change for our Black or African-American population. Grade 11, evidence-based reading and writing. We see changes across the board, except for our area of students with disabilities. And then grade 11 SAT math, again, large, large change for our, in reduction of gap for our Black, African-American population, as well as economically disadvantaged population. So moving forward, one of the things that are, that we have in front of us is continuing to look at our data, look at our practices, and incorporate that comprehensive needs assessment that we do in writing our future district improvement plan. And that improvement plan is going to be aligned with the dynamic plan, going to be aligned with our strategic objectives. And we feel like the focus that we're putting on culture-responsive practices, MTSS for all students in a comprehensive way, and really making sure that not only is our curriculum vertically aligned and strengthened, but we have the coaching support in place for our staff members to continue to improve our practice, we feel and believe that the data is just going to continue to improve. With that? Any questions?
Question.
Yes.
Member Lazarowitz.
On the graph, like, maybe three back, four, was 10, 10.5 for Hispanic? Why so high? Is there something we can do to help, to bring it, we wanted a negative, correct?
Yeah, we totally wanted a negative.
I mean, we're, what can we do to help?
Yes, we want it in a negative. A negative, a negative number means that we're closing the achievement gap. So when you, when you see these numbers, we, that we should see, the higher the negative number in these charts, the, the more we've closed the achievement gap.
Right. So one of the things that we, what we need, our next steps in looking at that is, is looking at those students that were not proficient and who are Hispanic, is really looking at who those students are and what services they're, they're being provided. So it's-
Because that's a high number.
Correct.
It's a, it's a high number, it's a small number of students, so one or two students could be the, the, the swing in that. So it's, it's looking individually at students.
Yep. So really, it's breaking it down and looking at, looking at those individual students that were not proficient, and, and whether they're in third grade, fourth grade, or fifth grade, making sure that in a, that they're continuing to grow, or that they're growing towards proficiency, so that, you know, in eighth grade, in 11th grade, that they're college-ready.
Okay, so we're, we're on it, we're-
We are on it.
Okay.
Yep, we are absolutely on it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments?
I've got lots of questions, but I'll save them.
I have one. One thing I noticed on the, the graphs is that in a lot of the cases, it went down when they went to sixth grade.
Yes.
And I was kind of wondering, like, if that could also be some type of social aspect that's happening between the grades? Because I noticed with my daughter, everything was fine up until fifth, and then they kind of go, and then on sixth, and then they worked their way up again. Is there any way that is anything that we can do to, other than the, we had the bridge program a while back, to introduce what they're going to be learning to get them more positive in not having like a social aspect of, or, because, you know, they, they go to a new school, they go to middle school, they're making friends, and that's more important than school, so their grades drop off. And I was just kind of curious to see if there's anything in place that could help improve that.
Yep. As a teaching and learning team, as well as with the, the leaders around the district, especially from the elementary and middle school transition, we're really looking at all aspects of that transition because we recognize, and when we talk about the MTSS framework, we recognize that you can't look at a student strictly as academics, right? So as we look at those academic needs, the behavioral needs, the social, emotional needs, that's what that MTSS framework is helping us with, but also really taking a good, hard look at how we transition from kid, our, our young people from elementary through middle school. So we've been starting to have those conversations, we'll be continuing to have those conversations, and really thinking strategically and intentionally about how do we help support young people with that transition, recognizing that, that it's more than just an academic transition, but it is also an academic transition. So we're, we're having those conversations, and we'll continue to have those, we'll share with the board what we're doing as well.
Yeah, because if you see, if they, in the earlier grades, that they do have the aptitude to increase their knowledge and, it's just, they should have made the transition, but a lot of kids, you know, they have a hard time going from different schools. But you could see, and when they went to high school, when, when they really see that, okay, I have to get out there, and it's true, the, the slopes are steeper in high school. But, you know, I was just curious to see if we have anything in place for that.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, because we actually had that conversation in SPA. And what Beth is talking about is, is definitely something that needs to be looked at as a district-wide support structure, you know? And then this reminds me of the MyKIP conversation that we've had, the, the whole child, really looking at the whole child. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about what the district is doing to support that whole child, especially when we make these major transitions from fifth to sixth grade, and then eighth through ninth grade. Member McQueen?
I was just going to make a comment that I've had that conversation multiple times with parents when I taught sixth grade, and a lot of it I noticed was organization. Like, when you're in fifth grade and you're in one classroom, and you find your math homework at the end of the day, you can turn it in because you're still in the same room. But now you're in sixth grade and you found your math homework in your ELA folder, but you haven't, you're not in that teacher's classroom anymore. And then they forget to go at the end of the day and turn it in. So they'll have work in their folders. They just don't turn it in because they're not, they're, they need a routine, they're not, you know, elementary school, it's, it's great, it's family, you're in the room, you know, you, they're with the same teacher, and then they have to get used to six new teachers and different rules in every class.
That's a great point. So again, things to consider in terms of how the entryway into sixth grade can be, including that. Other questions, comments?
I'm going to save mine, too.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Next up, we have an action item. This is action item 20-11-21, consider approval of resolution to change high school science course pathways. We discussed this last time with regard to having more clarity around the language, and we really talked in great detail with the entire team in SPA last time, and Member Lazarowitz, Member Berninski, and I were present, so we, we fleshed this out pretty well. So I am looking for a motion for that action item.
Madam President, I move that we approve the resolution to change the high school science course pathway, and it's actually removing a graduation requirement, and it's action item 201121.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was moved by Member Berninski, seconded by Member Brooks. Discussion?
I just wanted to express my gratitude that we had a really good discussion around this in SPA, and my reservations were completely addressed, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, and I appreciate you being there, appreciate Member Lazarowitz, I appreciate Beth and the entire team. This really does open up opportunities for our kids when we eliminate that requirement, and especially since it was a barrier for many kids, and we talk about equity, we talk about making sure that we have more opportunities for kids. This is a move in the right direction for the district, so. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Motion carries 5-0. We're moving on to action items and discussion for F. I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Rod Green, who was our MASB facilitator back when we did our workshop. And he's willing to go through the MASB self-assessment for us. You may recall, you took the self-assessment as board members about a month ago. And for us to go through that, we need a facilitator. So Dr. Green has proposed two dates based on what could be convenient for all of us and him. One option to look at is November 23rd from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. I know we're already doing a session 11 to 2 around Robert's Rules, and we could tag on another two hours with Dr. Green and make that almost like a full day. So that's one option to consider.
What date was that?
November 23rd. It's our Saturday that we've scheduled for Robert's Rule. And then the second option is January 21. It's our off Tuesday from 5:30 to 6:30. So if you could take a look at your calendars, what I'd like to do is narrow down. If both dates work, I would like to send this to Member Savage and Member Keough for consideration. Or if only one works, then we just kind of try to go with that with the other members. Do you want me to repeat? So one option is November 23rd, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's a Saturday. And then the second option is January 21. It's a Tuesday from 5:30 to 7:30. It's a two-hour block, I'm sorry.
Both dates work, but I'd rather do the 23rd because we're already meeting from 11 to 2, and then just add on the two hours, and we don't have to come for a different night.
That's not going to work for me. Sorry.
Okay, so November 23rd does not work for you?
No, the 21st should probably.
Okay. January 21, can we?
5:30 at night to s-
5:30 to 7:30.
7:30? I'm good either day.
Member Brooks?
Yeah, January.
Okay. So it looks like we are looking at a January 21. Superintendent Merritt, does that?
Works for me.
Okay. So I will propose that to Member Savage and Member Keough. And if they're available, I will schedule that with Dr. Rod Green. And just a reminder, we are meeting at the Canton Library on November 23rd from 11 to 2. And I've reserved a room. I will send you the exact room location, and we will make sure that the agenda gets posted. And we have, and that's already actually in our calendar that we approved today. All right, that's all I have for action items and discussions. Can we quickly go through follow-up board questions? We have outstanding items for student growth data from Julie and Anthony when they become available.
We've received Anthony's, so we can cross that off, but we're still waiting for Julie's.
Okay. Follow-up on science course pathway, we just discussed that, so.
That's complete.
That is complete. Dynamic plan update?
That was board notes, that's complete.
And artwork from issue law?
That is accomplished.
Yep, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any questions from tonight that need to be added?
What I would like to suggest, if, I know that people said they had questions for last time, or next time that we do the data, but if there's something that you could send to me in advance, if you have those questions, so we can work on getting some answers for you, or maybe incorporate that into the next layer of the presentation, that will be helpful.
Okay.
Timeline of rolling out the bond election information to voters?
Yes.
Let's add that to-
New questions.
Nicole, did you get that? Okay. Any other questions that we need to add? The only one I have is, in terms of the language for naditorium, should be spelled it out, or is it?
It looks like, what I heard him say is we had two options, to either go with naditorium or use some language such as swimming pool facility. So I would say that whatever direction that we need to go, we need to have that tonight because the next time you see it would be in resolution form to vote.
I think swimming pool facility might be a little clearer to people, what it was, for the people who are looking at the language when they're in the voting booth.
Can we, can maybe go around and see for everyone, and then we go with consensus, does that work?
Swimming pool would be fine.
Okay. Member Lazarowitz, swimming pool. Member McQueen, swimming pool?
Swimming pool facility.
Facility.
Yes, the facility, so we can include the locker room.
Got to be a-
Okay.
Got to be the whole thing.
I still like naditorium. I think swimming pool facility sounds like just a swimming pool.
Okay.
And my two cents, I think swimming pool facility sounds like we might be adding something to the facility, but not adding a pool. You can't do the slash, so, yeah.
It's one or the other.
So if I had two more cents, I would think our Charles Olson Naditorium, right now, is what is named on our building. I think that, once again, when we talk about the education as we go around to the community, that would be our job to really emphasize what does this mean and why. And then I did ask the question to Kurt during our steering committee, if you were voting, and you didn't know, are you allowed to use your phone during that? He said, yes, you could Google. So I would be in favor of the naditorium if I have a say.
So you're saying swimming pool facility doesn't quite capture the work that's being done?
For me, I could see that as thinking, we have two pools now, and we're going to enhance the facility without having a new pool.
Yeah, I didn't think about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that does put a different perspective on it.
Because people can Google naditorium out of time. I mean, I did.
You're a savvy person. Okay, let's go back one more time.
And then one question, not question, addition. If we just said pool itself, would that be allowable?
No.
Without using, even though we have other facilities in the language?
No, because you can't just put the pool up. You have to have the locker rooms with the pool.
Right, but because we also have locker room language, is what I'm saying, in the paragraph itself. So we didn't say like a locker room at Salem and a locker room, we just have locker room, and that's going to be, that's going to incorporate like locker rooms, bathrooms, and all of that. So I didn't know if that would, is that a question to ask or not? You see what I'm trying to say?
The locker room that's outside with the whole facility of the building?
Because when you look at the language in general, we're talking about restrooms or locker rooms. We're talking about these different things in the facility as new. I think it's in the new language, right? Debbie, do we have it?
I don't see locker room.
Naditorium additions to existing buildings.
That wouldn't be covered into the facilities language?
No.
Can I ask a question? In the second line of the second bullet, you have maintenance slash storage. Could you say naditorium slash pool facility?
Oh, I'd like-
He said we couldn't asterisk or put a parenthesis.
You can't do asterisk or parenthesis.
Right, asterisk or parenthesis, but we didn't ask about a slash. And this language has already been embedded by him.
So I like the idea of having naditorium slash swimming facility.
I think the question needs to be, though, if you cannot put the slash there, we have to decide what it would be.
Yes.
Okay, so if you cannot put the slash there-
If you can't say naditorium slash swimming pool facility.
Then I guess we would leave it at naditorium.
Yeah.
All right, so can we go with that?
Let's go with that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that. Yes, yes. All right, I think that is it for board follow-up questions. I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A motion was made by Member Lazarowitz.
Second.
Seconded by Member Brooks. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting adjourned 9:59. Motion passes 5-0.